I'll call a meeting to order. John, would you call a roll? Call them, please.
Jessica Abesa.
Here.
Charlie McLean.
Yes.
Sarah Neville. Alan Nulian.
Here.
Mimi Rankotor.
Here.
Sarah Rich.
Here.
Khalil Siddique. Tucker Willis.
Here.
You have it for him.
Thank you. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes from August 2nd. The minutes were, as we know, emailed to us, so I will entertain a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes.
I will make the motion to waive the reading and approve.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The first order of petitions is case number 20- 2022-13 at 30 Hillside Avenue.
Please remember to speak into the microphone. Thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Jay Duker. I'm here speaking on behalf of Larry Meads, the owner of 30 Hillside Ave. in Chelsea. Before you was the picture of the existing, pre-existing non-conforming garage that sits at that location. Next slide, please. That's looking west. This is looking east. Next slide. This is the plot plan for the subject property. As you can see, the garage is mostly to the front of the property. The land slopes down toward the back. At about 20 feet overall to pitching downhill. Next slide, please. We're proposing to tear down the garage. We propose to erect a single-family home on the footprint, on the existing footprint. And this is a rendition of what the front of the house would look like. Next slide, please. And this would be the rear of the house. What you see around the property perimeter is a low-height picket fence with shrubbery and other landscaping. The trees you see there, the trees you see there, the one to your left is existing. It's a large tree. And the other, those two trees are going to remain on site, I should say. Next slide, please. This is a project that was approved by the Board of Appeal and the Planning Board back in '04-14. This shows you the difference in the project today. We've reduced it in size. The red is, the red outline is what was approved back in 2014. Today, you have before you plans showing you in blue what we are proposing today. The rear decks have been eliminated. The rear deck, all the way over, low-height rear deck has been eliminated. The third floor in the rear has been eliminated. And that's pretty much the difference what you see before you today from 2014. Next slide. This is, was there another slide before that, Mr. De Priest? Okay, that's fine. Oh, back to this one. Before I show you the first floor plans, if you see the line going through the street grade, just to orient you for the next slides coming up, there are two levels above the street grade and two levels below the street grade. Next slide. So this is the first floor level above the street grade. It's at grade. It consists, half of it is taken up by a two-car garage, which is actually existing. The other part of the home there is two bedrooms, a bath, laundry, and the stairs that go down, it's a second means of regress, are within the addition. It's a 27-by-16-foot addition to the back of the structure, and it has a four-foot-by-10-and-a-half-foot balcony. Next slide. This is the second floor above street grade. It's more or less the great room. It has the kitchen, living room, dining area. What you see is a roof deck above the story below. It's been reduced in size. At one point, it was, took the whole perimeter of the roof, but that, we reduced that in size after speaking with the neighbor, had some concerns, and we'll talk about that shortly. The stairway up, next slide, please, goes up to a heated attic. Next slide, please. A heated attic which would not be used for human occupancy. It's going to be heated. It's going to have some HVAC equipment, two dormers for light and ventilation, and it's for storage, for storage only. Next slide. This is the first story below the street grade. The stairway continues down to the backyard for the rear regress. It has a bedroom. It has its own bathroom. This is, this is not a separate unit. It's open and common, as you'll see in the next slide. It's open and common to upstairs and open and common to the story below. Next slide. This is the grade level, the basement, walkout patio with pavers on grade. It's utility room. It has a wet bar and a small bathroom with no shower or bathtub or anything like that. Some mechanical space. And you'll see the stairs that go up to street grade. Next slide, please. This is, that's a rendition of what the back of the house would look like from street grade. At one point, we did have a full second-story addition that went all the way over after consultation with the owner who's here tonight, who will speak, the neighbor in the rear. We reduced, we took off half the second-story addition. You'll see that's where the dotted line was, and we low, we just took it away. So it's a one-story garage on that side of the building. We also, after speaking with the neighbor, we shifted the whole addition in the rear. We shifted that another three feet toward the right of the building. Next slide, please. This is generally the front of the building, what it would look like at street level. You'll see the outline of the garage, of the second story that was omitted. Next slide. This is the landscaping plan. There's just about, there's a little less than 50 different shrubs and bushes that will be planted all around. This is actually part of the stormwater management plan that you'll see on the next slides. This will help reduce any stormwater runoff to the neighbors below. As you can see, it's the same building footprint that you have here in the bottom in a 16-by-27-foot addition. Next slide. This is the stormwater plan, one of four pages. Next slide. This shows the existing conditions. This is the stormwater plan. You'll see that there's, all the roof drains are going to be captured and be directed to a CULTEC system that will recharge the ground, and it will, it will manage all the stormwater runoff from the building. Right now, there's no management of any runoff from the site, so the building occupies about 30%, a little less than 30% of the site, which will now be managed, and including the grass and the shrubbery will all help to manage any runoff downhill. Next slide. This is just more of some engineering for the CULTEC systems and the chambers that go along with it. Next slide. And this is utility connections to the street. Next slide. That sums up my presentation. Just in summary, this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure in use. It's unique to this site. The hardship is the structure can't really do anything with it. It shouldn't really be there in a residential neighborhood. The shape of the lot is also unique to this area, which causes us to maintain the footprint where it is. There's really no other way we could build on it. The proposal does not create any new non-conformities. It fits the character of the neighborhood. We believe it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and it improves the stormwater management on site. Community needs are served by this proposal. It provides a much-needed housing stock. Traffic and pedestrian flow will not be negatively impacted. The project provides off-street parking. There's a pedestrian sidewalk that's existing, which will be improved. There's adequate water, sewer, and gas, utility in the street. Electricity is already serviced to this building and in use. Single-family home fits the character of the neighborhood as opposed to the existing garage, and the single-family home will increase the tax revenue for the city as opposed to the existing garage. And the stormwater management system and landscaping will help reduce any stormwater runoff for the neighbors below. That's my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Will we hear from any of the butters this evening?
Excuse me?
Will we hear from the butters?
Yes, I believe there's at least one abutter here that I'm aware of.
Talking to the mic.
Good evening. My name's Attorney Catherine Brown. I'm here on behalf of Costas Busios.
I'm sorry. Your name again? I'm sorry.
Attorney Catherine Brown.
Catherine Brown.
I'm here on behalf of the rear neighbor that Mr. Duker had mentioned, Mr. Costas Busios. He, so, he does agree with the plan in principle, however, and as Mr. Duker had stated, he has already brought up several concerns that have been addressed in revised plans somewhat. However, originally, he was going to agree to the revised plans, and then he had spoken with an architect who had came to his house, I think it was the morning of the zoning board meeting a couple of weeks ago. And the architect pointed out the issue with the existing non-conformity in the setback in the rear that's already, I think, seven, almost eight feet, too close to Mr. Cost, Mr. Busios's yard. Adding the height of the garage roof onto that existing setback non-conformity, it basically reduces his view of the sky. Because of the natural hill, the downward slope, the topography, it's almost like this looming structure that would now have a roof on it and be overlooking his yard, blocking a good portion of his sky. And so while he does appreciate the concessions that have already been made in revising the plans, he does still have this concern with respect to his, the value and enjoyment of his property.
Can you repeat the address that you're referring?
Yes, I'm sorry. 69 Eleanor Street.
I'm sorry, Eleanor, you said?
Yes.
Okay. The plans have the name of the previous owner, but it is the lot that's labeled Lucas and Sonia Rodriguez. So once the building is expanded, would it, the setback at the pinch point of the southwest corner of the developed property? What is the setback at that pinch point?
The setback to the quarter where the garage is, to Mr. Busios's property, is 16 feet 9 inches.
Once it's been rebuilt, is that?
It's actually going to be built on the same footprint. I would add, if I may, the roof, the garage, so that portion of the building is there. We had a 10-pitch roof on it at one time. One of the things we did was lower it about three feet. So right now, it's 6 foot 8 inches high, the roof, on top of the garage that's existing.
Sorry, for clarification, are we talking about the view from the setback of the yard or from the windows of his house? The view, the looming, is it coming from, if you're viewing from your house, like your, like windows, or is it coming from your, from what?
The backyard.
The backyard, okay.
The, 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 the.
Okay, thank you.
No? No questions?
I do. I have a question. Besides the, I know we don't have anything to do with the aesthetics of this building, which I think is challenging. I think, why put a second story on at all? Why not just build down? And why not build something a little bit more? Because the building is very modern, and it's, and I'm very biased. I love modern architecture, so I know we don't have anything to do about aesthetics and this, but I don't understand the, why not accentuate what's already there? I, I don't get, the inside of the house is challenging in, in design, so I can't figure out, and why not just take away the second floor and just go down the hill?
Sure, I appreciate that. If you, if you go to page 8-1, it's probably the fourth page, Mr. De Priest, I'm sorry, the first-floor layout. It is a challenging site.
Totally.
And the only way this would really work, because of the cost of construction, this is the first-floor layout. There's really not a lot of room once you have the two-car garage on the first floor. It doesn't leave a lot for bedrooms and kitchen and dining. If you remember, the second floor had, we squeezed the dining room, the kitchen, and the living room all in one location because we took off half the second floor. So really, it wouldn't work without a second story, and we did take half the second story off.
It would if you got rid of the game room.
Well, so going down below the street level, it, it's, it's a second means of egress, no matter what, half, some of that is most, some of that is taken up by the egress stair, which used to be on the back deck. So we took the back deck off. The egress stair is now inside. So really, the first level below street level is just, is a bedroom. I mean, we could leave the underground floor open. You'd have an open stair coming out, but it really, in the big scheme of things, it wouldn't matter. It's two levels below grade. One is a bedroom. One is just the game room and the walkout patio that they'll use for entertainment when they're, you know, barbecuing, whatever, and it's for the stairway. So there's, there wasn't really a lot of wiggle room, but we were able to take half the second floor off at the request of Mr. Busios. So the footprint is, we're taking advantage of the footprint that is there. And like I say, the second, the first floor is mostly, almost half of it is garage. The other, if I may, the other, we did remove all the rear open decks, exterior stairs. We removed the section of the second story. We removed the third floor mezzanine and open deck have been eliminated. I think those are the original plans you may still have in front of you. We've shifted the, the rear addition over. Second-floor roof deck has been reduced in size. We've added comprehensive landscape. This is all very respectful. We had very respectful conversations. We're trying to, I understand Mr. Busios's concern, but there's no real changes to the footprint that is there now. And like I say, if, I mean, the other alternative is use the whole first floor and have parking on the street. But the problem with that is, the real estate agent, with the construction costs today, we're looking at maybe between $600,000 and $800,000 to build. We're at a point where the owner may, or may be upside down, or it's, he wants to live there. That's not, the money's not the issue, but we still want to build something that has some value without being upside down.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the typical conditions. I think this is an incredibly challenging site in footprint and in topography, and the building is a vast improvement over what you proposed earlier. You've modified it to appease the butters, and it's, it's no bigger than it needs to be, so I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Second?
I'm not in favor of this.
Going to have a second before we can move.
I have a second.
Eighty seconds. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any conditions?
Still no conditions. Is that three in favor? One, two, Alan? Favor? Sarah? No? No? Sarah?
No.
So I'm a no.
Three, four, and three against.
I'm a no.
Alan and Khalil? No, I guess.
Yes.
Tucker?
It's up to me. I'm opposed.
Okay, so the motion does not pass. What did you make?
Motion is not carried.
I'm sorry.
Say, the motion is not carried.
Okay. Thank you. You want to make another motion?
Do you want to make a motion to the ZBA?
Someone has to make the motion.
We need to make a motion.
Oh, I would like to make a motion that the ZBA doesn't approve this.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Jessica, Mimi, Tucker, and Charlie.
Don't. Yeah.
Okay.
I like about this.
Okay, it's just, you're lacking a recommendation.
I'm sorry.
Our next step is to go.
The recommendation was not to approve.
And to recommend that the ZBA not approve.
Oh, I take it back. Don't listen to me. So what, when's their next meeting?
The meeting, September, October 11th, 11th, October 11th, in this room.
So you can still go to the ZBA? You just won't go with?
This is, this is a recommendation only. So you go back to the ZBA. They'll ask me, how did the planning board vote? I'll have to tell them, the planning board voted to recommend that the ZBA not approve, but it's up to them to, whether they take that in whole and part or not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
The next case is 2022-15 at 170 Cottage Street. The petitioner is the Neighborhood Developers Incorporated. Okay, you need to identify yourselves and give an address and state your petition.
Great. Good evening. My name is Steve LaFerrera. I'm the Director of Real Estate at the Neighborhood Developers for Garishav in Chelsea.
Hello, I'm Cliff Bomer. I'm a principal at David Square Architects. We're 240A Elm Street in David Square, Somerville.
Great. And I'm joined by our project manager, Sean, and our attorney from Notre Maclean and Valium Moore. John, if you could go to the next slide, please. So we're actually here in front of the planning board tonight for the third time. In 2018, a different owner got approved a project for 66 apartments. In 2021, we signed a purchase and sales agreement with the owner and asked this board for some modifications to the special permit, major site plan and variances, which they granted. Today, we're back again for two reasons. First of all, that permit has expired, and second of all, we've made some exciting changes that we think makes the project actually better. Next slide, please. So most of you are probably familiar with the site, 170 Cottage Street. It's between Cottage Street and Bellingham Street, right next to the Chelsea Greenway and a block away from the Eastern Ave. Silverline Stop. Next slide, please. And again, in the broader neighborhood on the Greenway and located next to a couple of important community amenities.
Steve, can you, can you speak into the mic when you?
Yes. Next slide, please. This is just a view from Cottage Street at, at the corner of the site where it meets Silverline Way. You can notice the slope, Bellingham Street, Cottage Street is at grade, and Bellingham Street slopes bridges over the Silverline, so that creates some interesting topography on the site to sort of manage that, that change. Next slide, please. And then this is looking down from the Bellingham Street Bridge, again, along the Chelsea Greenway, the Silverline, onto the site. Next slide, please. And then this is looking up from the Chelsea Street, from, sorry, the Chelsea Greenway, the Silverline. There are four homes on Willow Street that abut the site, and you can see this sort of steep embankment sort of heading up to those four properties. Next slide, please. Our goals here are simple. As you expect with the TND project, we want to create affordable homes for families along the Silverline Corridor, building on our success at 25 Sixth Street, providing access to transportation, jobs, services, and that multimodal path, the Chelsea Greenway. We want to design a sustainable, energy-efficient building. This will be designed to passive house standards, which hopefully many of you have heard of. It's kind of the premier energy efficiency, energy conservation, third-party verification system that there is, and it'll be our third passive house project. And we want to create publicly accessible open space, both adjacent to the Greenway to complement that, but also for the families who will live at this property. Next slide, please. So again, there's 66 apartments overall, 12 one-bedrooms, 43 two-bedrooms, and 11 three-bedrooms, so really geared toward families. We now have nearly 16,000 square feet of open space, which is the major change from the last proposal, including a public park that'll sort of be adjacent to the Greenway, as I mentioned before. We have a large community room so that we can have events with all our residents in there. We'll be planting a lot of new trees. There'll be opportunities for public art. We'll have 72 parking spaces for cars and 70 parking spaces for bicycles. Next slide, please. And again, it's focused on affordability, so 17 of the 66 homes will be affordable to families at 30% AMI, which is about $42,000 for a family of four, a little less for smaller families and more for larger, and then 49 homes at 60% AMI, so again, sort of twice that. And as always, will apply to the state for the maximum local preference allowed by law, which is 70%. Next slide, please. So we hope that we'll get your recommendation tonight to be able to go to the zoning board next month. We're submitting our second application to the state to fund this project at the end of October, and assuming that we're successful with you and the zoning board in a couple of weeks, and then with DHCD, we'd like to start construction next spring, early summer, and people can live there by the winter of 2025. Next slide, please. So like I said, there, we did update the site plan in the So like I said, there, we did update the site plan, and the major change is that previously we had a driveway into parking, sort of on Cottage Street, near the Silverline. And we also had a second driveway at the edge of the property closest to Willow Street, which would go under the first floor of the building into this lot behind the building. We have eliminated that second driveway and made that open space, put the parking underneath the building, so that we opened up this whole back area as usable open space. And so, again, that almost doubled the open space from just over eighteen thousand to fifteen thousand six hundred square feet. Next slide, please. So you can see now, again, a little bit of open space, usable open space on the, I'll call it the Willow Street side of the building, but primarily opening up usable open space. And you can see there's sort of two places, we put in kind of a purple color, a public park. Those two areas will be separated by a retaining wall because of the elevation and topography of the site. So the idea is really that that pink area is complementing the Greenway, you know, will be, TND will maintain it, will take care of it. But it'll feel like it's a public park and, and no one will be barred from being there. And the area above the retaining wall will be primarily for the residents and the families who live there. Next slide, please. So this is a summary of the relief that we're requesting and, and sort of how it's changed over the three proposals. So again, another owner proposed ninety parking spaces. We cut that back when we added three-bedroom units, there were no three-bedroom units before. And making this change, putting it into the garage, we lost, putting all the parking underground, we lost eight parking spaces. So we're going from eighty that you approved last year to seventy-two. Minimum lot area is staying the same. And the rear yard setback is changing, this is consistent with the goal of creating a, a door on Bellingham Street. So there'd be pedestrian access there and enlivening that street, so I think that's, that's actually a positive, it says rear yard, but there really is no rear yard here. And the side setback now requires relief because we put the parking underground. So that won't be experienced by folks, because that will be underground, but the structure, the garage structure, will come within ten feet, six inches. And the relief there is twenty-five percent of the building height. We did pick up about a foot of height that we needed to get in order to get the cars sort of under and around, so the garage grew by about a foot, so we need a little bit more relief on the height, but we're not adding a story. Next slide, please. And there are several pieces of relief that were previously granted that we no longer need. Obviously, the most prominent among them is open space, which originally needed relief. Also, the floor area ratio is one point oh, but there's a, a bonus if you have usable open space, which we meet. So now we're allowed two point oh, so we don't actually need the, the relief. Again, we're at one point five two, but that's now allowed. And maximum lot coverage was a belief that was originally granted and is no longer necessary. Next slide, please. And again, this is just illustrating, like I said, that this is an underground garage, so that's where it's getting close to the Silverline, the, really, the Chelsea Greenway and then the Silverline. But again, I don't think that'll be really experienced by, by anyone, because it'll be underground. Next slide, please. And I'm going to turn it over to Cliff to walk through the design.
Hi, again, I'm Cliff Bomer at Davis Square Architects. I did want to point out that there is another architect with us here tonight, in case you managed to stump me on a question. Between the two of us, I think we can answer all the questions you might have. I wanted to start by emphasizing one point that Steve made, and I'm bringing it up because it actually came up at the zoning hearing. Steve noted that we eliminated the driveway on the west side of the building because, and chose instead to create this underground parking structure. And one really strong benefit of that, it was that in order to create that driveway, we had to build some pretty significant retaining walls to protect the neighbors on Willow Street. And one neighbor who was at the zoning hearing did ask about that, he said, well, what's going on with my building? And how can I be assured that our buildings aren't structurally compromised at all? And where we've landed now is, is much, much better, the retaining wall is doable, it's engineerable. But at this point, we're able to preserve the integrity of the neighbors' homes, which is simply sloped landscape area. And create more green space that can be landscaped as well. So that's an important change for us because of the opportunities it provides on the west side of the building, we think for a much better interface with those Willow Street neighbors. A couple other things I want to mention with this slide. Steve mentioned passive house, I just want to reiterate that, that is absolutely the highest level of energy conservation, third-party program that you can sign up for. It's, it's not easy, it requires really a lot of consultants, tons of iterative designs, and very aggressive approach to building envelope. So, but as Steve pointed, this isn't new for them, it's not new for our firm, but we think it's really important to preserve resources, you know, future resources through the development of this building. Another point that I wanted to make was included in those sixty-six units. The state code would require us to have three group, what are known as group two units, fully accessible units. In fact, we are providing six fully accessible units in this development, you know, which is a voluntary upgrade and enhancement to accessibility. Two of those units are kind of the passive house of accessibility, they're CBA, Community-Based Housing Funded Accessible Units. So these are units that are even more accommodating for a, a larger variety of disabilities that can be accommodated in those units. And we thought that was pretty important to provide as well. So the view that you're looking at here, this is looking along Cottage at the south elevation of the building. As Steve noted, the, it's a very challenging site, and I think you saw it in the photographs, and I'm sure you've all driven by it many times. It, those kinds of challenges create great opportunities from an architect's perspective. As you'll see, there are a variety of elevations, none of our street elevations are exactly the same. This building has a three-story elevation on Bellingham, a four-story elevation at this end of the building, the west end on Cottage Street. By the time you go down the hill at the other end, it's five-story elevation. Within the courtyard, because of the, this notion of creating the parking deck, a landscape parking deck, we're able to maintain kind of the only consistent elevation area in the building where we're able to create a courtyard with a consistent elevation of four stories that define the courtyard. What you're looking at in, in this image is, it's our approach to what we think is a, a, a way to address the, the street conditions. We're setting the building back enough that we have the ability to landscape in front of the building. And the way that we're treating it's, you know, it's not a small building, and the next, I don't want to go to the next slide yet, but you'll see it's actually smaller than its closest neighbor, considerably smaller. But we, still, it's long enough that you really want to think about, how do you break down the scale of that building? It's a long elevation. One aspect of passive house is that it tends to like simple masses, because they're very easy, not very easy, but they're easier to insulate, create unbroken insulation with no thermal bridging in a simple volume. So what we worked on with this elevation is creating an elevation that's broken up both horizontally and layered vertically. And we think, what we're, we call it the wave, the wave allows us to wrap all the way around the building, and we think accentuate and accommodate the different elevations, the different heights. As I noticed, the building is very dynamic in elevation changes. So we wanted to come up with a system that, that really took advantage of that and, or fully use that opportunity for creating interest in the building. What you're looking at, the wave, what we call the wave, is, stands out something like fourteen inches from the building, it's aluminum composite material that is mounted on to a very simple volume, that's actually the passive house volume of the building. The blue areas in the building are clapboards, so very much like many of the smaller-scale buildings in the neighborhood. That's the blue layer, and finally, the bottom layer of the building is masonry, again, tapping on a traditional material. But give, obviously giving this building a much more contemporary approach as far as creating visual interest and breaking down the scale of the building. The next slide is looking at the east, at the east elevation. And I think it's kind of interesting in this, if you look at our neighbor across the street, we're sixty-six units, our neighbor across the street is a hundred sixty-five units. And you're looking at their eastern, their eastern elevation, we're five stories at our eastern elevation. And as Steve pointed out, we're mitigating that with the creation of a public park on that elevation between the, the Silverline and the, the face of the building. Our neighbor across the street also used kind of similar approach, in a sense, a very simple volume, but articulated with kind of added-on balconies and some different colors, some variety in materials. So, we're, we both have adopted kind of similar approaches in how to create interest in the building, we think. But we are a much smaller building, I just think that's important to note that. What you see in yellow at the end to the right-hand side of our building is a stair, stairway area of the building. What we wanted to do is to be able to create easy access for the residents of the building at, at that end of the building, you know, close to the Silverline. But are, still maintaining a primary entry off of Cottage Street, and yet another entry at the second level on Bellingham. We can go to the next slide, where we're looking at the, that's the tallest part of our building, again, that's the eastern elevation with the single garage entry at that level. To the right of that, you see a kind of indication of a mural-ish, we haven't designed that exactly, but when Steve was talking about the retaining wall that makes up the difference to create the usable outdoor space, that, that you're kind of looking at what would be the roof of the parking garage towards the, the Bellingham side of the building. No other comments on materials, they're the same wrap as you go all the way around the building. The next slide is when I was talking about the courtyard, so that's the courtyard that we're able to create with the four-story elevations. This didn't exist in the previous iteration, and now we're able to really create occupiable space on the roof of the parking garage. That golden area in the middle is the community room, the, the community room is over eighteen hundred square feet, which is sized adequately to accommodate the entire residency of the building if we really want to have a big meeting. It also is large enough that in, as we know, we've been thinking about what we've learned from COVID. Having generous programmable multipurpose space is very important, particularly in affordable housing, where we simply can't add more and more space within the unit, it just becomes infeasible financially. So it was really important to have really good multipurpose space in this building, and eighteen hundred, at least in our experience, is a lot of community space we're building at this scale. The next picture is another view inside showing people having all kinds of fun in the courtyard, which is the idea, this is family housing, so we expect to see a lot of kids out there playing in the courtyard. We don't have super-specific programming, but I think it's pretty obvious that it could be, it's big enough that we can serve a lot of needs. Similar to the argument for a larger community room, having a lot of usable outdoor space is, is also important. Is also important in a timeframe when we're all trying to prepare for what could be another pandemic, who knows? But this building, I think, is well-suited through the passive house, it creates a resiliency and lots of usable space within and without the building. We think we're well-positioned should we be unfortunate enough to go through anything like the current pandemic. Next slide, I think this is, we included this slide because, well, for one thing, you see what we intend to do on the roof. Most passive house developments in New England do need some supplemental power generation, onsite power generation, which we have a lot of roof space, we intend to do that. I don't think we've nailed down exactly the funding source for that at this point. But, and that's really because it changes constantly, where you can get, whether they're tax credits or a power purchase agreement, or whatever agreement it is, it's a, it changes constantly, but we're committed to that. It's absolutely solar-ready, the roof will be solar-ready. I think, but again, why we showed this was, I think, again, to highlight the variety of elevations that we had to accommodate, street, streetscapes, and, and changes in elevation that, that we think this building solves. Oh, I, I think another interesting thing in this image is that you've noticed a difference in the landscaping on the parking deck. We're limiting, you know, we can't plant redwoods on the parking deck, there's, there's not enough soil there. But we are proposing trees that can grow with very large canopies in the areas that are outside of the footprint. So in this rendering where you see larger trees, those are outside the footprint of the parking decks, we're actually able to plant big, big trees. The next elevation, the next shot is an elevation, that's our three-story side of the building on Bellingham. You've probably noticed there's a kind of theme of this, this orangish-yellowish color that highlights entry points to the building. So we've carried a similar treatment around, you see in the background to the left, you're looking over at the community room. So while there is variety on the elevations, we want to use some mechanisms so that, and I think it's kind of obvious, given the facade treatment, that, that it is a unified building, even though it is a very complicated facade situation and, and complicated landscape to reconcile. The next view is, is looking towards the east on Bellingham. I think what I like about this image is if you look across the street, that is the scale along Bellingham, there are three-story, there are three-story buildings along Bellingham with not a very big setback. In fact, the neighbor across the street has really minimal setback. So even though we did have to, we have increased our request that Steve pointed out in, in the chart, we think that this level of setback is appropriate, and the scale of the building, a three-story building, we think fits in nicely on Bellingham. Then, I, I won't go into detail in the plans, but the next one shows what the parking garage looks like. And you see that little corner Steve was talking about in the upper right-hand corner that encroaches more, being, encroaches on the setback more than we did previously. I think probably what's most notable on this, you see the elevators at two ends of the building. We need an elevator at central entry point on, relatively central entry point on, on Cottage, but we also wanted to encourage people to go, or make it easy for people to go on, go out on the eastern end of the building to access the Silverline. You already know about the stats, the floor plan, I think what's probably, that primary entry is right at the beginning, was sort of typical support areas for a multi-family building of this scale. But I, I think what this image shows is how big that community room actually is, and it's big for a building of sixty-six units. It's really a generous space that we think can serve a lot of needs now and things that we haven't thought of yet. So I would emphasize flexibility when you create a space that large. I think the next image is just typical floor, yeah, from there on up, it's just a typical plan to generally stack that fill out the unit mix that we, that we already described. You do see where the accessible units are, they're shaded a kind of tan color. Unless anybody really wants to look at those, we, yeah, you can just scroll through those, and now I hand it back to Steve.
So like I said at the top, you know, this is a project that you've seen before and approved before, and really, the main change is trading eight parking spots, which is a ten percent reduction for about an eighty percent increase in open space. Next slide. And then I think, again, you've seen this before. And then I think, again, you've seen this before, you know, some of the data that we look at and trying to figure out what an appropriate amount of parking is, MAPC did this perfect-fit parking study, I think it was four years ago now, and they looked at 20 sites in Chelsea, 14 of them were rentals, six were condos, you know, six were affordable, and you can see that they're using kind of between .6 and .96 with the rentals being less, and again, we're proposing 1.1, so way more than what the MAPC study, that somebody went out at 2:00 in the morning and counted cars, what that study showed that people are actually using on existing properties. Next slide, please. We looked at some of our, you know, 30-plus unit buildings in, in Chelsea, and again, we're seeing parking ratios in that .6 to .9 range, overall .71, and we're proposing 1.1 here, so this would actually be the most parking that we've built on a per-unit ratio, and again, we think we probably have more parking than we need even with that 72 parking spaces. Next slide, please. And obviously, we're a block away from the Silver Line Station, so we think that's another, you know, reason why this shouldn't need any more parking than any of those other sites and maybe would require less. Next slide, please. So, again, you know, this is the relief requested, I won't go into too much detail on it here, I think we've, we've covered it. Next slide. And obviously, the, the main reason we're sitting here is the, or the main reason we're proposing this is the incredible need for affordable housing in Chelsea. 1005 Broadway is hopefully going to open up at the very end of this year, we took 1,927 applicants for the 38 family-sized units there, 683 of which were from Chelsea, and, you know, according to Zumper.com, Chelsea rents have increased about 14% for a two-bedroom apartment in the last year, so it's just getting worse. Next slide, please. And again, we try to be responsive to the city's plans, the comprehensive housing analysis was done in 2017, we're meeting three of the five goals through this project, retaining existing residents through creation of affordable housing, increasing the supply and variety of housing choices to support current and future residents, and this TND is a nonprofit, so it's encouraging that collaboration between the city and nonprofits. Next slide, please. And so I'll just leave you with this, it's the same project summary you saw at the top, so I won't go through it again, but I can leave it up there, and welcome to, for, for any questions.
So, the board has, the board has two duties here, one is to make a recommendation to the ZBA, the other is major site plan approval.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, one is, did you guys consider scooters, motorized bikes, which are becoming more popular? That's one question. Second question is, I think you've really undersized the mailroom and laundry rooms, there you see, and trash rooms, you only have, you've got a 4-4 building and you've got trash on the first floor? I, I don't have much issues with the parking also, so I think loading and unloading is going to be a challenge because everyone's going to go to the main building, I don't think they're going to go on Bellingham, I think they're going to go on Cottage, so there isn't really a good loading zone, so if somebody's taking an Uber or whichever, you know, again, I, those are, so I think traffic's going to be slightly hard in that little area because of the way the building is designed and how people come in and out of the building?
I can try to answer most of those questions. We did not really think about scooters, I think there probably would be some ability to store them where the bikes are, but I think you're, but I think you're, you're right that we didn't think about scooters. Laundry, there's a laundry room on every floor, so that's why they seem smaller, because they're, they're really, there are multiple of them, they're supposed to serve each floor, and that way hopefully residents won't have to go up or down the elevator. We tend to, as a rule of thumb, have one machine for about every eight units, and that seems to work well. The other thing you said was trash, there's a trash chute that comes through the building, so there's a trash room on each floor, there'll be recycling totes there, and we actually size them so that we could potentially do compost there, and then the trash, it'll, it'll come down into a compactor, it'll be at the lower level, which is, I think, what you saw there.
I didn't see the plans.
I'm sorry?
I didn't see the chute for the plans.
We can probably go back there if, if you want, John, and try to point that out. So, the trash area is over here, so this will be the trash room, the chute's over here, and there's space for the recycling totes and potentially for compost. In terms of loading, you know, our assumption is that the, the main entrance on Cottage Street would probably be where someone would get an Uber, for example, because they probably, the address to the building would be 170 Cottage, so I think you're right, there's not dedicated space there for a loading zone, there's currently street parking there.
I think to the point about, say, move-ins, for example, that's another one of the reasons that we do have the elevator at the east end of the building. What we're imagining is that if, if somebody needs to move in, that's where that would happen, they could pull into the driveway and move in through that entry and that elevator. But Steve's right about the pickup area, that we think would happen right off Cottage Street.
Can you go over some of the soundproofing measures that you're designing in so that the, along the T, along the edge of the silver line?
Yeah, so, one of the things that we've actually, this will be our, I think, fourth project that we've hired an acoustic consultant for, and one of the, we started doing that because we found through our resident services team that actually the, the number-one complaint that residents would have would be noise between units, either up or down or side to side, and when we hired an acoustic consultant, they said, you know, we're, we're hearing this a lot, as you, as developers are improving the envelope of the building, it's, it's keeping the noise outside, outside of the sort of unintended consequence of keeping, of having great insulation and keeping air from flowing is that it's also the noise. So, I, so we've hired an acoustic consultant to both look at the noise from the silver, from the silver line, but also between units, because we want to make sure that, that, again, if you're not hearing the noise from outside, you're hearing the noise inside the building more, and so, so we've hired a, an acoustic consultant that we've worked with before to deal with both the exterior noise from the train and, and they've also done measurements, so we know kind of exactly what the noise is, and again, we're, we're focused, I, I think we actually are more concerned about the interior noise than the exterior noise.
Are they being built to condo standards if the building were to be converted at one point?
I think-
There was a stronger demand for homeownership?
Yeah, I think, it's a good question, I think we see differences in kind of how we build the, the properties. Due to the financing, it, which is primarily through low-income housing tax credits, it's unlikely to be converted to condos, but I think our focus is on having really durable materials that are going to last and be relatively easy to maintain, so I think some of the finishes may not necess, we'll probably, we will focus on durable finishes as opposed to sort of high-end for the sake of, of getting the highest sale price possible finishes, so I think they'll be, I think they'll be as good, if not better, than any of the condos that are built, but they'll be different, to be completely honest.
And what's the security in the building and lighting, especially in the underground parking?
Yeah, I think the first thing I should say is it's not necessarily clear in the plans, but there aren't walls between the rows of parking, so it'll be an open space, it'll be well-lit, we'll have security cameras. I don't know that we've placed all of the cameras yet, but that's another thing that we've hired consultants for on our last few projects to sort of help us think through exactly where the cameras need to be, so we have coverage throughout the whole place, and it will certainly be well-lit.
So, you have not submitted a lighting plan yet?
Um-
For the outside of the building?
We did submit an exterior lighting plan, I don't think I have it in the slide presentation.
An exterior lighting plan was submitted, I reviewed it, and I have no concerns with it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, that space to the left right there, is that just going to be just green area sloping?
Over here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because I think the previous issue with that area was that there was dumping that was going on from the neighbors that were on Willow, I believe, so I guess that is one concern that I have. Also parking, I mean, I live at 138 Cottage Street, and parking at 7:00 PM is pretty much impossible, so taking away parking from this building is just going to make that worse.
I think, you know, we're cautiously optimistic that if, certainly when we purchased the property, we noticed there was a lot of trash on the property, we've been trying to keep up with it over the last year that we've owned it, I don't know exactly where it's coming from, but I'm cautiously optimistic that with our investment in the site, people will be less likely to sort of see it as a, a space to dump trash. In terms of parking, I mean, there's not a building there now, so we're not taking away parking that's existing there, I, we really think that we're building more parking than we think our residents will need. I wish I could share data from the property that's going to open this, this fall, this winter, because that would help, but our most recent property that we opened was at 242 Spencer, where there are 34 homes, and we have 18 cars there right now, so we actually think that we're overbuilding the parking here and that it won't make the situation worse. Oh, go ahead.
Parking studies don't take into account that a neigh, you know, some, a resident who does not have a car has visitors with cars who come in.
Yep.
You know, I, that's just a comment, because I constantly hear from developers about parking studies and how they're, the parking spaces are underutilized by residents, and I just, you know, remember that there are visitors who come, there are delivery people who come.
Yep, understood, yeah, delivery, you know, we won't, that's harder to control, obviously, as you know, because we're asking for relief on parking, residents of the building wouldn't be eligible for a parking sticker.
But they are eligible for a visitor parking sticker.
Okay.
Or parking passes.
Yeah, and again, we think we'll have some excess parking so that within the garage we can have, you know, accommodate visitors.
Just a correction, Ashaleen, they are not eligible for visitor parking stickers, the ordinance hasn't passed yet.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is the exterior design, the materials, that is decided upon, I mean, the visual aspect of the building is, I mean, the, the, the shape of it is really good, but I just think with the materials in the pictures that we've seen, it looks very institutional. It's very, I'm thinking, you know, like Corbusier, very stark, it's not an inviting presence.
Well, I appreciate that comment, to be honest, I think that the materials are probably mostly, at this point, locked in, I think the colors are absolutely not. One thing I didn't mention in my, my presentation is we currently, right now, have, we, or actually, we put out, I guess, a month or two ago, a call for an artist facilitator, we'll be interviewing a few of them in a couple of weeks, and one of the things that we are hoping that they'll do is help engage community members in general, and some of the residents that are existing properties, about thinking about public art, about thinking about landscaping, and about thinking of how it ties into some of the color choices we make on the inside and the outside of the building. So I would say that the materials, you know, I'm, I'm open to a conversation about it, but I think the materials, we feel pretty good about, but I think the colors are probably going to change.
Okay, okay, that, yeah, I mean, because looking at it, like I said, the wave design, the way you have adapted it to the landscape is really cool, but the colors are, I mean, I, I'm, it's so, so utilitarian, institutional, it makes me think of the worst of the, of housing projects.
I, we want to run a community process, so I don't want to speak too much about colors, but my guess is that they'll be bright, my expectation is that coming out of that, they'll probably end up being brighter than what I just showed there.
Ashaleen, I would recommend then that you put a condition of design review on it.
Okay, thank you.
Can you go to the first exterior elevation rendering that you showed on the south facade? Can you, oh, John?
Sure.
The first rendering, can we go back a couple of lines? The thing that's striking about that view is that, you know, there's telephone poles everywhere, and if there were an opportunity to put those underground, it would make that really narrow side yard setback more usable for bikers and pedestrians and everything else.
Yeah.
I mean, it just would help beautify that facade of the building.
I completely agree with you, I wish I had the ability to make a promise about it, we'll, we'll certainly ask our resource about it, but we've been struggling with that on, on two of our other projects in Chelsea.
Is there a specific door for drop-off and, and pickup? Because obviously, there's going to be Uber, eats going, going in, and I can just imagine cars parking on the street right down the middle.
Yeah, my assumption is that that 170, the sort of front door in the middle of this facade on, on Cottage Street would be the door, because if the Uber driver puts 170 Cottage on their GPS, then that's, we're assuming where they'll end up.
So, that would be on this street?
That's correct.
Okay.
And you're envisioning rents would range, what would be the range for the rental prices?
That-
I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know, Sean, if you might give a- Help me out.
With that a little bit.
It depends a little bit on utilities, but I think the rents that we were projecting are probably including utilities. Sorry, we can get back to you on that. So, the, the 17 that are at 30% AMI would be based on 30% of the resident's income, so the real question is what are the sort of one-to-three-bedroom rents? Are there any butters in the audience? Yeah, so if all utilities are included, they'd range from about $1,400 to about $2,000 for a three-bedroom, again, with all utilities included.
Okay, thank you.
Another concern that I have is that the silver line does pass Cottage right here, and the entrance to the parking is basically right, right there, so it seems like, I know there are stop signs stopping the silver line, like, to look both ways before it crosses Cottage, but it seems like this intersection itself will be pretty chaotic, like, once all, all said and done.
I think the entrance is pulled back from the silver line at Fairmount, there's that sort of public open space that, that we showed. Yeah, the silver line and the Chelsea freeway and then this whole area is sort of open space, so I think the driveway is pulled back from the intersection of Fairmount.
I know there are some people here who would like to speak regarding this project, and one of them is the city manager, and I'll ask him if he would like to address us regarding this, now is the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be extremely brief, so this, my administration is in full support of this project. Housing, particularly affordable housing, is the biggest challenge, in my opinion, that we face in this community, it's not just a Chelsea problem, this is a regional problem. This project makes a dent in that, certainly 60-plus units isn't going to solve it by any means, but the city needs more affordable housing, we do prioritize, and the council's been clear in our effort to prioritize homeownership, affordable homeownership opportunities, and we try to pursue those wherever possible, but that- But that doesn't mean there's not a need for affordable rental units as well. Not everyone is in position to be a homeowner. We need affordable rental units as well in this community. And so because this offers that in a way that beautifies this vacant lot and is, in my opinion, an improvement over the previous project that was approved by this board, this project has my administration's full support, so I would urge you to approve the site plan as well as make a favorable, favorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to address the board? Oh, I'm sorry. Step ahead, step up and tell us who you are and where you live.
Good evening, board members, and hello, Mr. Chair. How are you? My name is Alice, is this on? My name is Alice Murillo, and I, full disclosure, I am the chair of the Neighborhood Developers Board. I am also a resident of Cottage Street. I live in condos across the street. I've been there for six years. When I first moved in, that lot was a dump and an eyesore for many years. I was pleased in two thousand eighteen when the first buyer at least cleaned it up, but it's hard to maintain until you develop it properly. And I am a supporter of affordable housing, and again, sixty units is a little bit of a dent, but we need to get started, and it's scale. It's not five or ten units. This is scale that's definitely needed in the city of Chelsea. I like the concept of it being affordable for families as well, not only because of the Greenway being there, which has become a popular walking pedestrian site for those of us who have pets. It's also a place where lots of bicyclists enjoy going all the way from East Boston to downtown Chelsea. The Silver Line, obviously, is incredible, an incredible addition to that part of Chelsea, taking us to South Station as well as to the commuter rail stop at Market Basket. And let's not forget that Bus one twelve is only a couple of blocks away to the south, and that takes you all the way to Wellington Station, all the way through Chelsea to Wellington. So provides lots of access for our residents. And in thinking of families, you've also got just another three blocks south of the community that's being proposed, Boys and Girls Club, right there, walking distance. People don't really need a car when you've got so many available opportunities right there in walking distance, and also Highland Park is right there. Silver Line has been a real plus. I am a homeowner in one seventy-five Cottage Street. I have a vehicle. I barely use it, because this is such a walkable city. So I love the fact that I have the one twelve, the Silver Line, South Station, North Station, easily accessible to me. And I think another thing that I noticed, because I walk my dog every day, I noticed that the elementary school bus comes down Cottage Street. So it's a wonderful pickup site for elementary school kids that are going to the Clark Complex, which is on Eastern Ave. So it's very, very convenient for families who would hopefully be living in this new development. The other thing I also want to comment, I know people worry about traffic. Well, I like numbers, so I've been making some observations every day when I walk my dog. And I ended up observing ten-minute blocks of time over an hour, Monday through Thursday mornings, which I believe to be maybe the most, the busiest time for cars to be coming and going. And I counted up, within that time period, if I take each ten-minute block for a whole hour, twenty-five vehicles coming into my complex of a hundred and sixty-five units or leaving. That was only twenty-five, between seven fifty and eight fifty in the morning. I thought I'd see a whole lot more. And I think what's happening is we've got a lot of folks who are taking advantage of the Silver Line and not really utilizing their vehicles if it's not truly necessary. So I think we've had the advantage of having good public transportation in the city of Chelsea. Not every community has that. So I, I feel that I embrace this project, not only as the chair of the T N D board, but what it's bringing to my neighborhood, my portion of Chelsea, and how it's enhancing what we have. I hear about the park that's going to be there. It's gonna beautify that space. And I only can imagine that all the residents who will come with this new project are really gonna enjoy our community as well. So I embrace it. I welcome it, and I, I hope that, to see it, I wish it were sooner than twenty twenty-five. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I lower this? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Maria Belen Power, and I live at thirteen Admirals Way. I'm also the Associate Executive Director of Green Roots, an environmental justice organization, and we are here to support the project. The need for affordable housing is huge. The need for affordable housing close to public transit is even bigger. And the need for those folks who need affordable housing to have green space and open space where they live is critical, as, as was mentioned before. For ten oh five Broadway, for thirty-eight units that were available, they received close to two thousand applications, and so, and six hundred of those were from Chelsea. So the need for folks to, to apply and qualify and live in affordable housing is, is really huge. So I encourage you to recommend this favorably to Z B A. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Sandy Maynard. I live on fifty-two Chester Ave, which is not far from where this project is going to be put. And I, in full disclosure, I'm a T N D board member. The fact that there's a crucial need for more affordable housing in Chelsea can't be disputed. And I am so impressed with the meticulous planning that has gone into this project, not only to address the residents' needs, the needs of the residents that will be living there, but the community concerns and the neighborhoods surrounding it. To put the parking underground and have more green space is awesome. The zoning meetings we had here in Chelsea over the summer to get community input, that was one of the concerns and things that the community wants and needs is more open space. So they've created that with putting the parking underground. I'm totally excited that there's going to be, how many? Eleven three-bedroom homes in this project for families. And the fact that seventeen of those homes are going to be going to less than thirty percent average, medium income is wonderful, because that's where the media's, where the most need is. And, and I just think the planning and foresight for the, the community room being large enough for future use and maybe another possible pandemic is important. I applaud their planning and foresight, and I approve this and hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, planning board members. My name is Ayman Swabney, and I am a resident at fifty-three Garrish. I am a sophomore at Chelsea High School. I am here supporting the one hundred and seventy Cottage Street project and hope that you can recommend in favor as well. I support this project because we need more affordable housing in Chelsea. These types of developments allow families the opportunities to grow in the community. My family and I are T N D residents, and our home is our stability, and we wish this for other families. There are kids in my school who are experiencing homelessness and ri, and risk of displacement, who would love this opportunity. This is why I'm here, asking for you to recommend in favor this project. For all these reasons, I strongly urge you to support this project. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns, and I wish you a good day.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you give me your name again?
Ayman Swabney. Ayman Swabney.
A B R M?
Ayman. A Y M A N.
A Y, sorry, A Y.
A Y M A N.
M A N.
Yes. S O U A B N Y. S O U A B N Y.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Loira Moore. I live in fourteen Vernon Street in Chelsea. This is not my first time supporting these units, but I have a specific warning in this. Why you are doing a three-bedroom or two-bedroom apartment for kids with disability? You are doing two units for disability, yes, but we need, that is for adults. We need families that have disabled kids.
There's, sorry, there are six fully accessible units. The two that you referenced are, the two that Cliff described as, as kind of being like enhanced accessibility. And the state says that they have more people who need those who are single individuals. That's part of the reason why we wanted to exceed the minimum, so that we could have accessible units for families. I completely agree with you.
Oh, because many in Chelsea, they have residents that they have kids that are disabled, and they meet big family weight, and they need two-bedroom or three-bedroom, but accessible wheelchair for the kids.
Yeah, so the six accessible units, I believe, and Cliff is double checking, but I believe there's two one-bedroom, three-two-bedroom, and one-three-bedroom.
All right, and another one. Thank you. You all know you all are my support, okay? I, my, my residents in Chelsea need a lot, because there is family and type of families for the situation they're passing in, in this, in this world. But I support anything you are doing, once my residents have a place to call home. All right? Thank you very much.
Good evening. Sorry, good evening, planning board members. My name is Mathi Kay, and I live in, in Chelsea, and I am residence of Chelsea at one oh four Central Ave. I work with Green Root, I am a housing committee member. I am here supporting one hundred and seventy Cottage Street project. I hope you can recommend us for the, this housing. I would like to support this project, because we need more affordable housing. We are, there are many people in Chelsea, including me, we are immigrant, we have a lot of problems. That is a burden being a migrant. We have a lot of frustration. We have a lot of burden even from our country. So the housing is a problem for us. We don't have my, our own private house, room. We have the, we have a private room, sorry, I don't mean that. We are living in, in part with roommate. There are a lot of problems with that. We are different, from different culture. We are from different place. So we need more affordable housing. We are working. We are, we are forced to work two jobs. On top of that, we are not, that, we are not getting that much salary, and we, we, we are living with such conditions that we are not, it is not convenient for us. So we are, we are, we need affordable housing in order to live conveniently. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. I admit, I don't live in Chelsea. I live up Route One in Molden, but I do work here as a counselor, and I have a lot of investment in this community, because most of my clients live in this general area. I cannot state the importance enough of having high-density, affordable rental properties nearby. I have a large number of clients who really are either inadequately housed or have no housing at all, and they would very much like to live in Chelsea. The problem is, I understand that there is a focus on homeownership, which I really appreciate. A lot of my clients simply do not have the income or the means to pay for that, which is, as the city manager said, why it's so important to have affordable rental properties as well. A project like this would be excellent for so many people I work with. It would give them the chance to have a place that is safe and comfortable and affordable for them without being too expensive. Yeah. It's worth noting that I myself actually preferred to live in Chelsea, back when I first moved to Molden, but I myself could not find an affordable apartment here that was within my budget. If a project like this had existed back then, I might live in Chelsea now. So just something to think about. Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, could you, I'm sorry, could you give me your name again?
Oh, right, right. Sorry. My name is Gregory Zelt.
Gregory?
Yeah, so Z as in zebra, E L, two Ts as in Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Marcus Queen. I live at eight Grove Street. I live at a property that the neighborhood developers developed, and I think it was vacant ten years. So I'm from Delaware. Where I come from, if there's an eyesore, somebody needs to fix it. And as far as I know, the neighborhood developers are the only company in Chelsea that are working on affordable housing, unless there's someone else. I don't know. They asked me to come here tonight, because I used to come here before, when I first moved into their properties, and I would come to the meetings and speak, because sometimes some of the residents wouldn't speak theirself. So I was an advocate for them, and look, I'm here again tonight. And I'm sure some of these people would love to live in some of these properties that they build, no matter what the color, no matter if it looked like it's institutionalized. I bet you you could ask some of them, and they would say, "It's clean, it's new," and that's what I said when I moved to eight Grove Street, because I wanted a one-bedroom apartment, but once I got in there and I got with the company, I was sold. So I, I feel like if somebody is trying to do good, why can't the people that make the decisions help them alone?
Hi, good evening. My name is Katie Figueroa, and I've been a resident of Chelsea for twenty-four years. I would like to have an opportunity to live in one of these affordable units. Currently, I live in a two-bedroom with three children and two pets. My children don't have their separate spaces to do homework, or they don't have a living room where they can go, so I would like to have an apartment, apartment that's dignified for them, that they'll be able to have their own bedroom. Right now, I, I pay seventeen hundred for the place that I live in. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Ellenberg. I live at one oh seven
I live at one oh seven Shirtlift Street here in Chelsea. I am a mother of two children, as you heard earlier with the squawking, who they weren't able to stay and speak. But we, I also work with Comunidades Enraizadas, Community Land Trust, which is a new nonprofit here in Chelsea, supported by Greenroots. Immigrant families trying to create opportunities for affordable homeownership and connection to the land. I want to say I'm here in support of this project and I want to speak for a moment to the question of homeownership. Over seventy percent of Chelsea rents. It's so important that we have homes for people who are renters. I'm a renter. Many of the, many, 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 like Katie who's been here for twenty-four years, many of the leaders in Chelsea are renters. And if people can have a home that is stable and where they can live indefinitely, then they have energy to give back to our community and to lead and make change and fight for improvements. So I just want to emphasize homeowner, renting does not mean transitory. Renting does not mean non-invested. Renting in a situation like this is a way to be rooted in your community. I also want to express my support for the additional open space. As a resident of that very dense area of Chelsea myself and a parent, open space, both for the people who live there and for people in the surrounding area, is a really huge asset of this project. Many of us in that neighborhood do not own cars. I do not own a car. It's not necessary. I can get where I need to go. I, the idea of open space and more room in exchange for these extra car spots that are likely unused seems like a really good trade to me. I urge your support for this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? We have two votes to take here. One is the recommendation to the ZBA on the special permits. And the other is the major site plan review. It doesn't matter, I mean, it's, it's your pleasure.
I would, I'll, I'll merge them. But I would like to, the only stipulation is I want to see a better drop-off zone. I think the drop-off zone needs to be addressed. I think that's going to be a big issue. I don't, I, I think parking is fine, your other concerns, but I think you need to sort of reconfigure how to do the drop-off zone some way.
Yeah, we were just talking about that over here. We see sort of two potential opportunities to...
Yeah, but otherwise, it's a, you know, I wish it was a little smaller, but I understand the size and the scope of it. But otherwise, I'm a yes. With, with, with the special, with the usual revolvers and also the addressing of the drop zone. I don't know what else to call it except the drop zone.
Is there a motion?
That's a motion. For both.
That would be a motion for the spec, for the site plan, because that's a site plan issue.
Okay.
Okay.
So you want to vote them separate, whatever you guys want to do.
I would recommend additional condition of the applicable standard conditions. And to address Ellen's concern about the proximity of the parking, the, the driveway should have a stop sign and a stop line.
And design review.
That, that would be the recommendation to the zoning board for approval.
Ice skating rink.
So motion by Mimi?
Motion by Mimi, yes.
I'll second it.
And second it. And this is for both the site plan review and the...
This is would be for the site plan review?
Does it be, I'm sorry, I thought this was for the special permit.
Oh, okay.
It's up to you.
I manage your motion to make it just for the special permit.
Just for the special permit, okay. Whatever you, if we want to separate them, we can separate them.
I will still second it.
Right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And now the site plan approval.
Our motion to recommend to the ZBA.
Did you second that?
I'll second.
Oh, okay. Sorry. All right, Megan seconded to approve the site plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
I'm already putting my votes. It'll go to board. Now let's see, good, the ZBA that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. What is it? These people instead are...
The board has additional work, so if you would like to go outside.
We have more work to do. You people can go home now.
You, you can stay, but there's more work that has to be done. This is also made, this is also made a site plan and special permit recommendation.
All right, the next order of business is case twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two at two ninety-five Eastern Avenue. The petitioner is Two Ninety-Five Eastern Chelsea LLC. Ladies.
Hi there.
Would you identify yourselves and present your petition?
Absolutely. My name is Jacqueline Martin. I work with GFI Partners, the owner and developer of Two Ninety-Five Eastern Avenue. I want to thank you all for having us this evening. With me are my full team of experts. Next to me, I have Katie Cruz. She's our engineer from Hancock Associates. Haley Pelazola, who is the vice president of development at GFI Partners. Jared Igerman of Ruben, Junus, and Rose, GFI's land use attorney. Jim Thornhill, who's our architect from Applied Form and Space. Dan Adams, who's our urban designer from the Landing Studio. And last but not least, we have Ken Cram, who is our traffic engineer from Bay State Engineering. You can go to the next slide, please, John. So before we dive into the site plan itself, I wanted to give you all an overview of GFI Partners, who we are and what we do. And you can go to the next slide, if you don't mind. Thank you. So GFI Partners is a full-service real estate development firm based in Boston. Since our founding in nineteen ninety-seven, our organization has developed over twenty million square feet of real estate. We now have about ten million square feet of real estate in our current portfolio and six million that are under development. We specialize in repositioning underutilized industrial and commercial parcels. And we do that by working closely with municipalities, community leaders, and organizations to bring those parcels back to life. Next slide, please. That's okay.
You can continue.
I can just continue on. So that's exactly what we're trying to do here at Two Ninety-Five Eastern Avenue. We've been working closely with the city of Chelsea's planning department, the city manager's office, community leaders and organizations such as Greenroots for several years to find the best use for this site. And with that said, once John gets back, I'll have him switch the slide as well so you have a visual. We're excited to show you our proposed project on Eastern Avenue, which features a one hundred fourteen-square-foot warehouse facility designed to attract local and regional light industrial warehouse users who have been priced out of the Boston market. This project also offers an opportunity for over three acres of waterfront recreational space that will be open to the public. You can switch this slide. I think you can go one more. If you don't mind. Okay, that's perfect. So Two Ninety-Five Eastern Ave is a nineteen-acre parcel. It's accessed from Eastern Avenue and it fronts the Chelsea River. You can go to the, actually, you can stay on this one. The site is within Chelsea's Port Zoning District. And the industrial uses that we propose require a special permit in the Port Zoning District. We're also in the Airport Related Overlay District and the Wireless Communication Facilities Overlay District, but neither of those are relevant. The shoreline of our site is within the Floodplain Overlay District, but only the public access paths are proposed there. And we'll get into that later when we walk through our public access design. This site is also under state jurisdiction. We, our project will require a Chapter Ninety-One Waterways License. We have gone through the full MEPA review. We received our certificate this summer. Our project will also require a Mass DEP Water Quality Permit. And finally, we will need a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers General Permit. Next slide, please. Okay, this is when I hand it off to Katie to dive into our site plan. But first, I believe she's going to go through our existing conditions.
Good evening. Like, like Jackie said, it's a nineteen-acre site. Of those nineteen acres, approximately nine acres are upland area and the remaining ten acres are within the tidal zone and water sheet of Chelsea Creek. There are, of the site, it's bounded by, sorry, the Chelsea River. Industrial properties to the north and south. The railroad to the north and Eastern Avenue to the west. There are three buildings currently on site that are surrounded by paved area. Access to those buildings is via an easement on the Abutter's property to the north, three oh five Eastern Avenue. And if you attended the site walk this summer, that's also how we accessed the property that day. There's a reciprocal easement on the property, kind of to the northeast of the paved area that provides access and parking rights to the Abutter at three oh five Eastern Avenue. The remainder of the project's site is a former tank farm that has become vegetated since the tank farm was decommissioned and demolished. And that area is bounded by just over a quarter mile of shoreline. Within that shoreline, there is a jetty that's a leftover from when the tank farm was there that provides great access and visibility to the Chelsea River. Because of the former tank farm, there is an AOL on the project site, which limits what can be, what can be done in the proposed condition. And the project is within the FEMA flood zone with elevation associated.
I couldn't hear you. Could you repeat the previous use of the site? I, I couldn't hear you.
It was a, a former oil tank farm. I think we can switch to the next slide. Like Jackie said, in the proposed condition, there will be a hundred and fourteen thousand square foot light industrial slash warehouse building on site. The building will be accessed via a new driveway on East, on Eastern Avenue that trucks and employees, as well as the public, will come in via that driveway and access loading docks that are on the southern, the long side of the building that faces the water and the eastern side of the building, which is the shorter side that also faces the water. We have designed the paved area surrounding those two sides to accommodate truck turning and access to the loading docks so that trucks can turn within the site and leave the site also via the driveway to Eastern Avenue. There will be employee parking on the western side of the building, between the building and Eastern Avenue, and also on the northeast side of the building. Including it, included in those parking lots are ten spaces for public use. Five of them are the closest to Eastern Avenue and five are on the opposite side, closest to the water. And I'll note that back in that corner, near the railroad tracks in the parking area, there's a salt marsh, that's, that's within the tidal zone. In addition to the proposed parking and industrial use, like Jackie mentioned, there are three acres of public access use along the shoreline, which the urban designer for the project will describe in more detail. There will be a dumpster on the southern side of the building. And snow storage for the building will be within the landscaped areas, excluding the areas that will be used for stormwater management and within some of the paved area on the southeast corner of the building. Any snow that's not able to be stored on site will be removed by a snow removal contractor. And I'll just mention on the parking area includes EV parking spaces and EV-ready parking spaces. Between, between the paved area and the driveway and the public access area that wraps around the shoreline, there will be a timber guard rail and a row of trees which will separate those two uses. Utilities for the proposed building will all connect to the mains in Eastern Avenue. The transformer for the building is located at the rear of the building and will be elevated above the flood zone. The stormwater drainage system for the site includes both low-impact design measures and a pipe system of pipes. The, the larger paved area between the building and the shoreline will drain overland to kind of a winding series of rain gardens, which you can see in blue on the plan in front of you. And then the roof area and the remaining paved areas will drain to isolator rows, which are subsurface systems of chambers wrapped in filter fabric. And the, the stormwater system is designed to meet the Massachusetts stormwater standards and will outlet to two proposed outfalls along the shoreline. I want to touch briefly on some concerns that were raised related to drainage on the Abutter's property to the north at three oh five Eastern Avenue. In the existing condition, there is a series of catch basins, both on the project site and the Abutter's project site, that collect stormwater from paved areas. And then there's also a portion of the Two Ninety-Five Eastern Avenue site that includes the easement area with rights to three oh five Eastern Avenue that drains onto the three oh five Eastern Avenue site. In the proposed condition, we'll be disconnecting the catch basins that are on the project site and rerouting most of the area that currently drains onto the three oh five site. Most of the area that will continue to drain to three oh five Eastern Avenue is comprised of the easement area itself. And that's because of the need to maintain vehicular access to that easement and match existing grades, which are lower than the proposed grades on the Two Ninety-Five Eastern Avenue site. I just also wanted to mention that I have met with the civil engineer that the Abutter has hired and we're having ongoing coordination related to that site. I'm going to talk a little bit about the proposed outfalls and the proposed grading on the project site. The outfalls are set at the spring high tide elevation, which is the highest predicted tide. So the stormwater drainage system will be raised above the typical tide cycles. The spring high tide is when the highest tide, it coincides with the, the moon. And I won't go into a whole lot of detail about that. But the, the site grading kind of related to the drainage system and getting that to function as well as meeting the existing grades around the perimeter of the site. So starting at the spring high tide elevation, we set the rain gardens in the bottom of the drainage system at that elevation and then graded up to the proposed building at a slope so that that paved area would drain. So that put the finished, the, the ground surface around the building at elevation twelve and with four-foot loading docks that puts the first floor of the building at elevation sixteen, which is six feet above the FEMA flood elevation of ten. Yeah, I think, I think that's pretty much it for site grading and the drainage system. And I think, here, I'll turn it back to Jackie.
Before we move forward, I just... Before we move forward, I just want to stay on this for a second to bring up some characteristics of the building that I thought I should make you all aware of. This building is designed to be leased to three separate wholesale storage or light manufacturing tenants. And the goal here is to attract small to midsize users from greater Boston who have been displaced just by the mere price of the Bar, the Boston market. I want to emphasize especially that this is not designed to be a freight forwarding facility or a logistics center. This is also a speculative development, so we do not know who our tenants will be yet. And I also just wanted to make a few notes about how this project meets all of your criteria to grant a special permit. The warehouse and light industrial uses are, that we intend to use in this particular project are in precisely the location that Chelsea has designated under the zoning code. We see that there are no significant environmental impacts and instead, we offer a high-quality public access and open space area. And just a few fiscal benefits that I wanted to bring up that are within our fiscal benefits analysis. We, this project will result in over $100,000 in that annual tax revenue. We will be spending 1.1 million dollars on the linkage fee. And we have agreed to contribute $500,000 towards an eventual lateral accessway, which, which we've had discussions with the Cities Planning Department about, and we're happy to talk through that a little further once we get through our public access design. So with all of that, I'd like to hand it over, and you can go to the next slide, John. I'd like to hand it over to Dan Adams, who will talk a little bit more about our public access space and how it's designed.
Hi, I'm Dan Adams. I'm an urban designer with Landing Studio. We specialize on the integration of public access in industrial and commercial environments. If we could move to the next slide, please. So what's outlined here, we've been doing a series of studies of sort of existing conditions and ecosystems that have been pioneering on the site. Many of you participated in the site walk and have seen that in the site's sort of underutilization since the abandonment of the oil terminal, is sort of what we refer to as pioneer landscape has taken seed on the landscape. And there's actually quite beautiful groves now of cottonwood trees and quaking aspen, which are both actually native tree types. There's also a series of invasive species, which I'll talk about more, that we would be looking to remove fragmites and knotweed in particular. And so what this diagram simply is identifying are sort of the different coastal landscape types that we've identified working with a horticulturalist named Kate Kennon, who's a specialist in industrial pioneer landscapes. And so we've toured the site, sort of sampled plants and identified what's surviving there. And that was largely driven by having, I'd say, really productive conversations with community members about sort of aspirations of the site to be a new public access to Chelsea Creek and restoration of sort of ecosystems in the area. Part of that is, of course, driven by the proximity to the Burke Elementary Complex and the sort of educational opportunities here. Next slide, please. These are some renderings of the sort of, I would say, curation of the secessionial and pioneer landscape. We're proposing a ten-foot-long path along the water's edge of permeable asphalt with a series of stone dust loops that are sort of peeling to the side, all of which would be ADA-compliant path network. And then again, sort of building off of the palette of native secessionial plants that are there, really sort of cultivating that pioneer landscape that's developing. What you, of course, see in the rendering is what I'd sort of refer to as the beauty of Chelsea Creek, in this case, which is immediately due east of what is known as the Turning Basin, which is one of the widest portions of Chelsea Creek before it transitions into Mill Creek. What you can start to get a sense of in the image are the expansive mud flats that are in the area, which are rich in both oysters and soft-shell clams. Again, a great sort of, and are also known flounder, egg-lane habitat. So again, a very nice sort of educational ecosystem. Next slide, please. Well, here are some of those mud flat environments. Next slide, please. This is some of the character of the upland pioneer, sort of dense grove of trees, which we found have a really sort of particular beauty to how they're taking root on the site. These are, of course, rich with habitat. There's all sorts of predatory birds that have already made this their home. Next slide, please. We've had a series of community walks and meetings discussing sort of goals for the site, which really led to, I'd say, the two-part sort of natural conservation-ish sort of interest along with passive recreation, as well as the kind of educational interests of the area. I, you know, you're all very familiar with Chelsea and the lack of access to the waterfront. This, as Katie mentioned, is about one-third of a mile of new coastal access. The acreage of that is about three acres of upland. For reference, Port Park in Chelsea is about .6 acres. So this is about five times the size in public access. Of course, not accounting for the huge expanse that Katie described of about ten acres of waterland, much of which are tidal mud flats, which aren't accessible owing to DPA regulations on water sheet access, but are certainly visible and sort of participating by proximity. Next slide, please. As part of those outreach efforts, we collected feedback from communities and community members and have been building the design accordingly. Next slide, please. I think much of that feedback really sort of related to the character of the landscape and a real desire to convert it from its industrial past as a tank farm to a sort of a more organic public realm, picking up on the kind of pioneer secessionial landscape, but also a material palette that tries to soften things as much as possible. So things like timber guard rails, timber fences. For some of the trees that do have to be removed from the site harvesting that material, we actually have a number of mature black locust trees that are actually probably reaching end of life, but make for great sort of urban furniture. Another, I think, was the notion of interpretive signage and wayfinding to really explain all the dynamic systems on the site. Of course, this is both the Turning Basin for industry, a historic indigenous landscape, a pioneer series of plants, and as Katie described, a sort of innovative system of green infrastructure water management, all of which have sort of educational aspects. Next slide, please. So this is the existing condition of the site. You can sort of see the various sort of pockets of ecosystems that have been developing. Next, and then actually, you really get a good sense in this aerial of the expansive mud flats that the public access walk would be giving people proximate access to. You also see the jetty that Katie described, which is just a beautiful overlook point, both at the basin but looking down south towards the Chelsea Street Bridge. Next slide, please. This was the result of our walk with the horticulturalist, Kate Kennon of Offshoots, really identifying the existing sort of pockets of new ecosystems. And not surprisingly, most of those are occurring right on the water's edge, which is fortuitous because that's where we are looking to build the public path network. Next slide, please. So this is a sort of a simplified diagram. And one thing we heard a lot from the community was where this has been an inaccessible site for so long, how will we ensure sort of a feeling of safety? We, of course, want it to be safe. We think the proximity to actually a commercial and industrial use of workers who are coming and going, hopefully from my perspective, twenty-four hours a day, really lends a sense of safety to the site. But that the looping characteristic really allows people to kind of choose. They're not sort of walking on a single path in a dead end and leading out, which I know has sort of plagued other sites like 245, 257 marginal. How do you sort of create loops of movement? So you can choose a way in, choose a way out, go a different way. So we have sort of micro loops and a major loop. The major loop is six tenths of a mile, to just give a sense of scale. The water's edge is just over a quarter of a mile. And I just wanted to point out here, the dashed line that's heading to the northeast in this image is, what Jackie mentioned, is a commitment to the future when Forbes, the former Forbes site might be developed to actually link with a boardwalk to what we all hope would be a public walk along the Forbes site as well. Next slide, please. And so this is the ultimate site plan of the public access area. What's sort of highlighted in the bright turquoise color would be the water filtration infrastructure for all of the hard surfaces on the site. We often refer to this as green infrastructure or bioretention, which would all be planted, in this case, to filter the water and cool it before it's discharged to Chelsea Creek. Otherwise, the sort of, sort of lima bean shapes on the waterfront are the lawn areas where we've kind of constructed, we're proposing to construct learning circles, sort of outdoor classrooms for students. Next slide, please. This is just zooming. One of the sort of, I think, advancements in the project that really came from community discussions. We had always, of course, focused on a waterfront walk, but when the idea of the loop came back, it really said, how could we create a second passage on the north side of the building? And that was particularly exciting to us because actually, the north side of the building is the more sort of urban side of the building. It's where the entrances of the building will be, so workers will be coming and going. Obviously, we think of not only sort of the public and schoolchildren coming here to recreate on the waterfront, but you'll have a high number of workers having a nice place to sort of go outside and eat or go and sit on the waterfront themselves. We've positioned picnic tables and bike racks in this area. But what you're seeing is the sort of curvilinear path. We, wherever possible with the dimensions, look to always situate the path between trees, so you're sort of walking in an alley of tree cover. Obviously, Chelsea is plagued with urban heat island and we have hundreds of trees specified for this plan. Highlighted in pink are the public access parking areas, which are on both ends of the property, so that people can park essentially on the two ends for wherever they want to go along the path network. Next slide, please. I think we went backwards. Thank you. This is just the other end of that northern path. And what it shows is how there are moments in that path that the landscape really widens, creating a generous feeling of landscape. Katie had mentioned, sort of highlighted in the northeast of the site is actually a really beautiful spontaneous salt marsh that's been developing. You've probably seen that on Chelsea Creek as water quality's been improving. There's, Spartina is making sort of a comeback on Chelsea Creek. And we call that the Swan Basin because there's actually a family of swans that has taken up residence in the Spartina. It's fortuitous. We have a large open space there of picnic tables immediately next to the Swan Basin. Next slide, please. This just speaks to some of the sort of barrier that we're planning between the sort of industrial operations to the north at 305 Eastern and this public access is a simple timber fence to delineate the boundary between public access and that. What we're trying to avoid are sort of heavy metal guard rails or chain-link fences, sort of maybe the standard elements of industrial landscapes, and really focus on a more sort of waterfront coastal landscape palette. Next slide, please. So these are just some views of those public access areas before and after. This is the current view on Eastern Avenue. As was mentioned, next slide, please. The buildings that are there currently will be removed. Hundreds of trees, I don't have an exact count, will be planted, sort of pulling the landscape to the street. We are hoping to salvage wood from some of the larger trees that will be coming down to create these sort of pergola structures to announce things like entry or lookout points on the water. Next slide, please. These are actually one of the locations that grass, is an invasive grass called fragmites, the sort of taller species, where we'd be looking to remove that and open these areas as lawns. Next slide. But preserving the groves that have been pioneering. So this would be an example of one of those sort of learning circle lawns on the waterfront. The little plastic tubes in the renderings are simply there that when we plant mini saplings, we have to protect them from rabbits. So that, that would just be an aesthetic in the landscape for a few years while the trees get established. Next slide, please. This would be, you know, the waterfront walk itself. Obviously, on the right is the Chelsea Creek itself. Next slide, please. And you can see, just using the landscape to buffer from the industrial operations, but otherwise trying to preserve as much of the openness to the waterway as possible. Next slide, please. This is that jetty which currently exists. It used to be the sort of unloading jetty for the petroleum terminal. Now it will be used, next slide, as a overlook to Chelsea Creek. We're proposing a large gathering table at the end of the jetty where people can have events. We've had experience on the MWA parcel located at about 55 Marginal Street. A lot of birthday parties actually happening. So we could foresee that type of use here. Next slide, please. This is actually looking at the path on the north side of the building. Part of what we're proposing, there's always been this sort of odd hallway that was built connecting between the two buildings. People always ask what that is. It's just a hallway between the two buildings that has a sort of column support structure. In demolishing these buildings, we found that those columns and the sort of T-bar at the top remain in the landscape area. Next slide. And it's a little hard to see here, but we're proposing to preserve that as a new vine trellis. When we designed Port Park, we did a lot with climbing vines on the domes to sort of create, which are great pollinator species. So the idea is to sort of use that as a trellis that guides people to the back. And so this would be the sort of vision of that back path. And what you see dividing the sort of asphalt area, which is sort of the access for 305 Eastern and the landscape on the right, is the, the sort of timber fence. So it's a timber fence and landscape that sort of keeps people on the path. Next slide, please. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about the public access area.
Next, I'd like to call up Jim Thornhill, our architect.
Good evening. My name is Jim Thornhill. I'm the principal for Applied Form and Space Architects. We're the project architect. And I'll give you a brief overview of the building itself. Next slide, please. This is a one-story building. It's approximately fourteen thousand square feet. We're proposing three tenant spaces, each approximately thirty-eight thou, thirty-eight thousand square feet. The building provides thirty-six feet clear interior height and the average roof height is about forty-three feet above the slab level. This is a pre-engineered building, which for GFI Partners is typically cast in place, concrete foundation, a ten-foot-high CMU base for durability around the perimeter of the building. The remainder of the wall is, the exterior wall is a three-inch insulated metal panel for energy efficiency and the roof is typically a standing seam metal roof. Our general column grid is approximately fifty-six feet by fifty-seven feet. So this is a very large span building. There are just a few design concepts I'd like to express and those include that the building really kind of becomes a backdrop for the beautiful work that Dan in the Landing Studio has done for the, for the public access. There is a, you'll see in the renderings, actually, next slide, please. You'll see in the renderings, not necessarily the architectural elevations, that there is a mural proposed. We kind of gave an impression of what that might look like, something colorful, something that kind of wraps the corner and goes on the public sides of the buildings. But ultimately, whatever designer or whatever artist is chosen for the mural, that will, that will lead to the final design of the mural itself. There are loading docks only located on the south and east side of the buildings. There are seventeen loading docks, as Jackie had mentioned. And tenant access is primarily through the north wall. So that was an opportunity that we had in terms of invigorating kind of the public and private portions of the building. And to accomplish that, we provided windows where we believe there will be offices to kind of help with the visual connection between the office areas on the inside and anyone using the public access spaces on the exterior. We also provided a series of clear story windows on the, on the north and south sides of the buildings. This helps to further articulate the facades. It brings in some natural light into the interior of the building, but it doesn't expose kind of any of the inner workings of the building to the exterior, since we don't know exactly what's going to be going on on the inside. And finally, the, on the north side of the buildings, the roof canopies announce the entrances for the buildings as well as the accessible handicap ramps as well, too. That's the brief overview. Thank you for your time. I'll be here for any questions.
Thanks, Jim. Next, I'd like to call Ken Cram to give a presentation on traffic. And you can go to the next slide, please.
Good evening. My name is Ken Cram. I am with Bayside Engineering. I'm a registered professional traffic engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'm a registered professional traffic engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As Jackie said, they've been working on this for several years, and I've been with them the entire way. And so we've done a full traffic impact and access study for the project, and we followed the state guidelines issued by Mass DOT and the Executive Office of Administration. And we looked at originally about four intersections, but when we met with the city earlier this year, it was requested to expand the study area. So we've gone basically from the Chelsea-Revere line with the Route 16 ramps with Broadway, down Eastern Avenue, including Eastern Avenue and Webster Avenue, driveway to 305 Eastern Avenue, Marginal Street, and then all the way up to Williams and Pearl Street. We followed the guidelines. We got brand-new traffic counts. We projected them out to the future. I had a number of conversations with Mr. De Priest on what other projects are in the area that we had to include in our background projections. Plus, we had a background growth rate, which we also included, just to make sure we didn't miss anything. A lot of the projects were smaller, didn't necessarily have traffic studies, but we included those in the traffic projections. We projected our traffic. Next slide, please. It's kind of tiny, you can't read it so well, but we're looking at about 480, my math, yes, my eyesight's still good, 480 total daily trips. Cut that in half for the number of vehicles coming and going, or about 240 for the entire industrial building. And of those daily trips, 30 are proposed to be truck trips, or cut that in half, so we're going to have about 15 trucks coming and going over the course of a 24-hour day. And the peak hours, we're looking at 81 in the morning and 44 in the evening. So we take that, those trip distributions, and we apply them to our no-build conditions, and we analyze all the intersections. And they come up generally with good levels of service. The one intersection that didn't operate so well, and that was because there were illegal left turns, was Webster Avenue and Eastern Avenue. When someone wants to make a left turn there when they can't, it blocks everything else up. So we then, next slide, please. We made a series of recommendations. I didn't go into great detail on the slide here, because I just didn't have enough room. But we made the recommendation that the driveway be designed to accommodate large vehicles. It's going to be one lane in, one lane out. And we have designed it such that vehicles will be able to pass safely. A key, a key question came up was truck routing. We did a lot of research. We traveled the city streets many times to make sure we knew where the truck routes are. We will not be using any of the exits off of Route 1 Tobin Bridge, which Beacon Street, Fourth Street, or Webster Avenue. But we will follow the ordained routes that are in the city's ordinance for truck routing, which basically brings you down, if you're coming from the north, you can get off at Carter Street exit, take Eastern Avenue, cut over on Screw Street, and then come Williams to Marginal to Eastern Avenue. Or if you're coming from, let's say, the south on Route 1, coming over to Tobin Bridge, trucks are allowed to take the Revere Beach Parkway exit, but they are directed to exit, the first exit, which is Broadway, and then come down Broadway and Eastern Avenue. As I indicated earlier, we don't have a lot of truck traffic, big truck traffic during the peak hours, so we don't think we'll have a significant impact there. We talk about signal timing adjustments, and the reason why we put that in there is because a couple of the intersections were recently evaluated in a road safety audit, which is a methodology that engineers in the state and municipalities use to evaluate intersections that have high crashes or large volumes, and it's basically a safety improvement methodology that identifies potential measures to improve intersections. And we propose to work with the city to try and implement some of those at our intersections. And then lastly, we'll have a transportation demand management program. This program will seek to try and get employees to carpool, for instance. We'll have a transportation coordinator on the site that will work with employees that those who want to commute. Will provide available MBTAT schedules, so they know, you know, when buses are coming and going, and so forth. So that's a brief summary of the traffic study, and I'll be glad to answer any questions when appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. And that's all we've got. We're happy to take any questions or feedback that you might have. And any questions we can't answer tonight, we'll certainly write up a memo and get you those answers as soon as possible.
So you're going to be the, the owner leasing out the space?
Correct.
Will there, I mean, are you going to have a management company there? Will the owner have a presence on-site?
Yes, so we will own and manage the building once it's built.
Because with respect to the final point on the traffic recommendations about transportation demand management, you can't, how are you going to compel the tenants to have their employees abide by all of this?
That's a great question. You know, I know it certainly depends on the tenant, but it's absolutely something that we will take ownership over and discuss with our tenants as, as they come to us.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that doesn't engender a great deal of confidence. I mean, you know, I understand, you know, that your intention is to do this, but again, how, how can you compel it?
Sure.
Good evening. Jay Igerman, attorney for the developer. It would be imposed under the lease, so they would be in breach of the lease. And we do have experience with this, as I, I think that's why it was important to let you know that GFI actually operates several million square feet already in Massachusetts, and that's how we do it. So we actually have, actually have greater power than we would if we didn't have them under lease, but we can hold them in breach.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. One, I've got questions for everybody. One is parking for an access to the, for the public for the park? Because I think, from what I can understand, unless I counted incorrectly, there's like 10 to 11 spaces, and so that seems to be a little low. And also, since the park is not going to be lit at night, how do we secure it at night? Then I have a question about whether the building can become green, and what about power, having stations to power trucks and cars? And if we can do solar, anything, because the roof is flat? I haven't seen anything about solar with the building. Also, signage for, is not addressed if tenants are going to want signage? So I understand about the mural, which will be, I'm sure, handsome, but, you know, there's going to be some signage in, so, and then I'm a little, I know you can put in the lease that trucks can't park there, but 17, if you're going to have 17 docks and only 14 trucks, then that means there's going to be some empty docks, so we've got to figure out sort of deliveries and that kind of thing. Do we also want to have manufacturing 24/7? I don't know if we want to have that kind of, I know that previous administrations and this one as well has worked very hard to make sure that they've lost some of that ability here. And I think that's my first round.
Wow. So I'll, I'll try to tackle that one, and then I encourage my experts to chime in. Sure.
First, the, this neighborhood, of course, is highly industrial historically. So I, I don't, we hadn't heard a comment before on whether there would be a limitation on hours for operation. That's something we can entertain, but I, I mean, I would, I would guess there aren't, there aren't limitations now in the area, and I don't know that there are residents who are impacted. So there are, you know, Chelsea is very densely occupied, so this may be one of the few areas, actually, where you could accommodate that kind of 24/7, but I, you would know better. On the solar readiness, yes, it is a flat roof. I think, you know, Jim, the architect, can, can give you calculations exactly how big a solar array we could accommodate. We haven't gotten that far. I mean, normally, the way it's done is you, you go to a third party, and you do a contract with a third party, so.
Jay, I can, I can chime in here, I apologize. We have been in contact with Eversource at this point, and through the MEPA process. We did commit to a 90% roof coverage with the, or roof, solar ready, excuse me. We also did discuss with the Department of, Department of Energy and Resources, a minimum of 20% roof coverage of a solar installation. So we're looking into that, and we have communications with Eversource.
Yeah, and I should have said, we should provide to you, if you don't have it, the MEPA certificate, which came out in August, because the Secretary of Environment had quite a bullet point list of what they wanted to see for energy efficiency measures. So as Jackie's saying, we've, we're looking into all of that. But as I was saying, we wouldn't do that in-house. You know, we wouldn't do solar arrays in-house. We would go to a third party and take advantage of things like the Eversource credit program and so on. I think that was, were there other questions? I'm sorry.
Parking.
Parking, yes. You know, I, many of us in the team have done a lot of urban waterfront projects. You know, this is a balance. I mean, as you know, because you're in the trenches on these hearings every month, you know, it's an industrial project. We're trying not to overload the site. We're not actually building a park. I mean, it's all going to be private property. We want to encourage the public, but by the same token, you know, we can't, we don't want to overdo it and make it into, you know, say, a, a large parking lot. So, you know, I defer to the, to the designers, I'm not a designer, on what they think is actually feasible. But from what I've done in Dorchester and in, in Boston and elsewhere in the state, I know it sounds small, and it would be for a park. If this were a DCR facility, 10 parking spaces is not going to cut it. But what we, what we recognize, we're not running away from, is we're trying to balance. You know, we're trying to do an industrial project, but it's on private titlands, and it's, it's subject to Chapter 91, and we want to be accommodating. I don't know that 10 is the right number, but I, you know, please just recognize we're, we're not trying to maximize necessarily.
No, I, I understand that, but what I'm thinking is like, so let's just assume it's a Sunday afternoon. How are you going to, you know, that's traditionally when there won't be a lot of possibly workers there, and so then you're going to have this parking lot that's going to be very tempting for people to come on a Sunday afternoon. It's a beautiful, beautiful site, and so I'm just trying to figure out, but come Friday, you know, afternoon, when the tenants are at peak, you know, I'm just trying to figure out the balance.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point. Shared parking is, is really the way to think of it. It's not on a weekend. If there's, you know, an expansive asphalt, which is not being occupied by worker parking, and we have onsite management, maybe that's something we can look at with staff, is a shared parking arrangement. I don't think we designed that, but you raise a good point, that, you know, the peak, the peak for the industrial use is not going to be the peak for the public access use.
And what about signage?
Signage, that actually came up at the zoning board, and many of us, when we went to the site tour, got lost. I did. I drove, I pulled into the.
Not signage for the park, signage for the building.
Oh, for the building.
If you're a tenant, and you want people to know where you are.
Right.
How are you going to know where Bozo's balloon making is, if they don't have a sign on there?
Right, no, for, for 295, that's the address here. The comment from a commissioner was to add a good sign on, on Eastern Avenue, and again, we'll work with staff. It's, it's really up to, I mean, usually with developers, they want to do all kinds of more signage than you want. So of course, we're amenable to that. But there isn't any, this isn't the kind of building where we would try to brand it, you know, there would be a roof sign saying State Street Bank or anything like that. But there would be a directional sign with the approval of the city from Eastern Avenue to make sure the public, workers, and deliveries go to the right place, because you can get lost down there. I did. Thank you.
Continuing on the managing piece, who's in charge of making sure landscaping stays like, like the public access looks nice, there's no littering, things like that?
Yeah, no, that, that's ownership's responsibility, and you have, you have belt and suspenders here. In many cities, there just isn't the staff to monitor that, you know? So if an owner is falling down on the, on the job, you might not necessarily catch it. It's difficult to go after them. Here, you also have state. This is a state permit, so we're going to have to get a Chapter 91 license from Mass DEP, and they have a lot of experience with this. There'll have to be a management plan that you'll see, public document. And there are advocacy groups, in, in Chelsea, it would be Green Roots, but also CLF, Conservation Law Foundation, who do pay attention to this to make sure that it's, it's, it's done. So there is sort of a, a, a track record, especially for the coastal, the coastal access, and, and establish standards of how wide it must be, making sure it's clear. If it is being used in winter, does it need to be plowed? If a bench is broken, you know, fix it. So it's a good question, but again, you would, in addition to whatever conditions of approval the city puts in, we're going to be under heavy conditions of approval from the state.
Thank you. I think the, the point on security is still, hasn't been answered, but I think that comes with the plans, is that what I'm hearing? Or is that separate?
Now, the security is a good question. You know, the, the balance, what we often see is a dawn-to-dusk rule, because that's what's safest for the public. And so the question, that's right, lighting. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to forget that. You know, that's, that's something we can discuss. I don't think the developer is averse to necessarily to nighttime access, but it may not be something that Chelsea wants. It may create more problems than, than, than it, than it solves.
Thank you, and I'm going to switch over to the topic of tenants. I know it's still kind of in the air. But in general, what does tenant, those, your target tenants?
Right, target tenants.
What are their hours, sort of, the delivery loads? And then, I know we're talking theoretical here, I just want a better picture.
Haley Palazola of GFI Partners, I work with Jackie. So as Jackie mentioned, it's a speculative warehouse, so at this time, we don't know users. What we're seeing in the marketplace right now is a lot of these urban industrial users that are really important to industry in the city of Boston, city of Chelsea, are kind of getting pushed out from the bigger users. So by subdividing the space, you know, we see these business-to-business tenants who are making deliveries to other businesses, so hitting inside the warehouse, some sort of manufacturing, light manufacturing, not heavy manufacturing, assembly of products, finished products, wholesale storage, and then out the door. So not a high-traffic user, and because it's an urban warehouse, we don't expect the WB67s pulling in and out of this site. It's more of the box trucks. So just to give you an example, we own a warehouse in Hyde Park, Boston, Katz Rubus. They deliver produce to all the restaurants in Boston, so they show up at these restaurants before we even get to work, and they're typically done before the afternoon hours. And it's really important to be able to provide a home for these industries, because they serve the urban corridor.
So how many employees does that look like?
We, we estimate about 100 employees for the three tenants, again, speculative, and that's over a 24-hour period, so typically into two, two or three shifts, depending on how the tenants operate.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just to amplify what we're seeing in Boston, so again, down in, near Mass and Cass and so on, all these sort of dead warehouse spaces are just being pushed out. They're not, you know, they have nowhere to go. So the demand is high, because the land pressure is so much to redevelop that for other uses. So Chelsea is a great location for them, because it's an inner suburb, it's convenient to population centers, and, you know, that's, that's the target that they're looking for.
What are you doing to enhance pedestrian access or discourage it? I, I think that, I mean, it's a wonderful public amenity, but it's going to be confusing to people, and it may not get used to its full potential, because people aren't, won't know that they're allowed there. So how are you going to clarify that?
I'd also like to call on Carl Allen, who, who's been working on the public access, you know, for Chelsea writ large. So I, I can't speak to what's happening offsite on Eastern Avenue. I mean, I will say, I don't think it's particularly welcoming pedestrian environment now. That's true. On our site, again, from my experience elsewhere and with Chapter 91, there, there will be signage making clear that it's public access. So yes, you're right. The, the public may see an industrial building and not quite know whether they're allowed there. So that's why you have to have signage to make it clear that it's coastal access. But I, I cannot speak to the pedestrian access getting to the site. That's why I, I think it's, it is correct to assume that on weekends, most people are going to drive, but I refer to others who have looked at that. It could be Dan. Dan, have you looked at Eastern Avenue?
Oh, yeah, sure. I agree that the exact intersection there, could probably, as Carl well knows. But, yeah, I think some of the things from a design perspective, we really want to bring the tree canopy to the street, so bring the trees, and that's where you might have seen in the site plan, we're doing a lot of sort of parking lot islands, so even in the areas where there's parking, it's under a grove of trees, again, also to reduce urban heat out. What we are showing for signage is, you might have seen, I had those sort of timber pergola structures, that's really to make like an announcement at the street at, I don't want to say a big scale, we're not trying to be overwhelming, but to put like an actual structure at the street with like an overhead sign that welcomes people in. Because, yeah, for those, I've looked at a lot of public waterfront paths, particular here in Chelsea, both the Mill Creek path, but also the, probably most profound is the well-known, the 245, 257 marginal path, where there's a few parking spots that are kind of beat up, and a small little green sign that says "for public only" with a tiny little arrow, and hardly anyone knows it's there. It's encased in eight-foot-tall chain link fences on both sides. That's exactly what we're trying to avoid. So, that's what I can say. I will also say, from our experience with Port Park, you know, there was, frankly, when we built Port Park, before Port Park was built, everyone said, "No one will want to go to the waterfront, no one will want to," no one says that in Chelsea anymore, those of us. And amazingly, when we built the park, and a few years later, the city came in and built a beautiful crosswalk at the end of Charles Street to get, so some of these things kind of do need to grow in time, would be my comment to that.
Okay, and the learning circles that you mentioned, I don't know who proposed, it's a wonderful idea, as long as schoolchildren can get there. So, what was the thinking behind that, how those, you know, people participating in that, we're going to get to the site?
Yeah, I mean, I think there are a series of crosswalks that provide access from the Burke complex today, so I don't mean to make it sound like it's an unsafe crossing area, particularly under the supervision of like teachers. We have had preliminary conversations with Green Roots and then the principals of Burke Elementary about that sort of desire to come and just have outdoor participation on the creek. I, you know, I think others have said, and I'll say, yeah, I'd love it if that intersection was evaluated.
Well, it would also be helpful to clarify that with the community, as far as how they might be able to utilize that public amenity. And if you have three tenants, imagining you're not going to have one of yourselves there onsite, and it's just going to be the tenants. So, who would they make arrangements with? All of that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, I think the, ensuring that the public access is real and not theoretical, that's what I mean by a management plan in practice, has to be good signage, having the onsite management, so when a new tenant comes in, they know under their lease, this is the situation, these parking spaces are reserved for the public, you cannot use them. If we're able to work out a shared parking arrangement, same thing. So, no, you're right, those details are the sort of thing that you would have to see in a plan as a condition of approval.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Natalie Salomon. I am an attorney at Feach Law Partners, and I represent Gliptol of New Hampshire, the owner of 305 Eastern Ave, the next-door neighbor of 295 Eastern Ave. As the engineer Katie alluded to earlier, my client had some concerns with respect to the drainage. Very briefly, currently, my client's property is tied into 295, the 295 drainage system. So, since there will be a brand-new drainage system installed, my client is concerned about, you know, how will its property drain? And as Katie also explained earlier, I'm happy to report that the parties, my client and 295 Eastern Ave, have been discussing, so that they can find a plan that would alleviate the concerns that my client has with respect to the drainage. Our engineer has been talking to Katie, and he's actively working to get all the information he needs to submit a plan to 295. And as of right now, 295 Eastern Ave has indicated that it is open to having a connection from 305 Eastern Ave to its new drainage system. But, 295 Eastern Ave wants to see our engineer's plan, and that's fair. So, we're working really hard to get all that information. As I said, right now, our engineer will, is in the process of getting a survey and also a topographic plan, he will get that tomorrow. We will get also some soil testing done next Tuesday, and we're working as fast as we can. But, we appreciate that the discussion is ongoing and that our concerns has been heard, and hopefully, we can get to a solution that will, again, as I said, alleviate any concerns that my client has with respect to the drainage. And I will add also one point. At the zoning board meeting, my client had some concerns with respect to public access, specifically, my client, the proposal seemed to suggest that the public would be using my client's property. But, we have been able to clarify with attorney argument that that's not going to be the case, that in fact, the public, either by car or the pedestrian, will only be using Eastern Ave, and that there will be no public use through my client's property. So, we're happy about that, and therefore, there's no concern anymore about that potential public use of my client's property. Thank you.
Are you suggesting that the board, I mean, you're not suggesting that we wait until next Tuesday, when you get this plan, before we vote?
Well, we're raising, we would like the board to, I'm, yes. We would like the board to know what our client's concern is, and I am updating you about what the progress has, that the progress has been made to address that concern that my client has. So, I am hoping that we can find a solution that will work for all of us. And I will, I plan on further dating the board about what, where those discussions are going.
Did, this letter, is it? Yes. So, have you seen this letter from Hancock Associates with respect to the issue of the drain line?
I have, yes.
And so, what do you make of this?
So, in this particular letter, it seemed to suggest that there was no pipe that tied from 305 to 295. Since then, since that letter was sent to the board, our engineer has spoken with Katie, and it is my understanding that Katie has, understands that there is a pipe somewhere, although it is not clear exactly where the location of that pipe is. And I'm, that's my understanding of those conversations between my engineer and Katie here. So, to answer your question, that letter, at the time that it was prepared, was done before Katie had a chance to speak with our engineer, Peter, who has been onsite and has provided additional information to Katie.
Okay.
Could we put a site plan up, so we can see where 305 is in proximity?
Sure, absolutely, that's a very good idea.
Good. Want to show us a whole, 305 building?
So, this is, yes. Thank you. So, this is exactly where my client's property is, in here. So, you can, you can understand why, initially, we were confused about the public use of the property, because you have a parking here, so this is Eastern Ave, but there's also a parking, another parking here, and it appeared as if the public was going to gain access to 295 through this way. And we have since been informed that that's not going to be the case, that the public is only going to be using that way. So, having access from and to Eastern Ave only. Thank you.
I don't think so. Thank you. Guy, would you like to?
So, Thomas Immercinho, City Manager. So, I just want to be clear, the city has no substantive opinion on this matter of discussion between Gliptol and GFI, other than to say, this is a matter of discussion between two sophisticated business owners, and it can and should be resolved. But, what it shouldn't do is hold up a permitting by the, by city boards on a project that serves the city's best interests. I say that because the city has been working with this developer for years, since the day he first acquired this property, we've been working closely with them, to try to come to a meeting of the minds on an industrial development, because this is an industrial site, that would both meet the needs of the developer, but also serve the interests of the city. This is a site that has been barren for many years, the city has desired to see it develop, wanted to see it developed commercially, made a commitment that it would be a commercial site, given how much residential development we had previously permitted right next door at Forbes, and so, we were committed to trying to find something that worked for both sides. And after literally years of back-and-forth discussion, we feel we came to a meeting of the minds on a development that works for both sides. It works for the city, because this is going to aesthetically significantly improve this particular site, it has economic benefits to the city, obviously being a commercial building that will generate tax dollars on a currently vacant parcel, and the most largest selling point to the city has been this robust public access that they have committed to creating here. It was done specifically at the city's request, we urged them to work closely with our environmental justice group on the waterfront, Green Roots, they did exactly that, they came to a plan that, at the end of the day, satisfied everyone, and so, the city's very pleased with this end result, and I urge the board to both approve the site plan and to recommend favorably the special permit to the zoning board of appeals. I think Carl may want to add a few things. I will, I want to give Carl and his department and Alex Train real credit, they worked tirelessly with this developer to come up with a plan that served the public, and I think this does.
Thank you.
Carl Allen, City of Chelsea, Department of Housing and Community Development. As many of you may know, and some of you may not, the city requested in 2016 a boundary review of the designated port area. This was one of three parcels that was removed by the Commonwealth from the designated port area, which is what enables the redevelopment of this parcel for non-water-dependent use. Subsequent to that, about four years ago, the city started a municipal harbor plan, which was just approved by the state this past spring. The municipal harbor plan codified the community's vision for the waterfront in Chelsea Creek. The two primary desires of the community were open space and access to the waterfront, and the second was jobs. This project is bringing both of those to reality. I'm hoping we'll get a few more than 100 jobs out of this, but the types of businesses that they're talking about offer the types of jobs which Chelsea residents can thrive at and support families using, and that's very important to the city. I'm, I believe that this is grossly overparked, and that I'm hopeful that a lot of the workers will live in Chelsea and actually walk and bike to their jobs, rather than drive cars. It's certainly accessible for that, and we'll figure out what to do with all these extra acres of surface parking at some point in the future, after we understand what the actual behavior of the tenants is going to be. But, so, again, you brought up the issue of security and access, that's not under our purview, that's under Massachusetts Waterways and DEP. In general, Chapter 91, access has to be 24/7 without restriction, whether they want to make exceptions or not, but in a building that hopefully will be operational 24/7, having a public access doesn't seem to be a security threat. We're hoping that most of the tenants will want to work three shifts and want to employ people on all three shifts, and all three might not, but, you know, hopefully, one or two of them will, because that's going to maximize the job density on the site. And job density was a critical element. One of the outcomes of the harbor plan was the city modified its zoning for the waterfront, as you had to weigh in on about two years ago now. And this is the first project that is implementing the new city requirements of continuous access to the public along the edge of the waterfront, and we're very excited by that. I think as it, once it's built, the commu, you know, it's going to take a while for the community to become aware of it. Using it as an elementary school living outdoor classroom will help immensely in letting people know that this facility and amenity is available to the community. I wouldn't be surprised if we didn't see things like Green Roots occasionally throwing one of their member meetings out on the site to kind of publicize and celebrate this new piece of Chelsea. The requirement for continuous access includes connections to any neighboring properties. We anticipate, well, Forbes is going up for auction in a week and a half, and we may see forward movement on that development, but one of the requirements of the Forbes development will be the connection to this property, and GFI has kindly donated half a million. And GFI has kindly donated half a million dollars to help us make sure that that happens. As Tom did, I urge you to recommend in favor of the special permits and this evening to approve the site plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on the project? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion? Uh, we're going to do the special permit first.
I have conditions to recommend. Design review, impact fee payment as agreed by the petitioner. MIPA required improvements, improvements included in the traffic report, a signage plan, and a site management plan.
I'll make the motion to approve the, or to recommend to ZBA that they approve the permits with the conditions, our usual conditions, as well as the special conditions just outlined by John.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Hayden seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
No opposed?
Proposed conditions for the site plan are: public access as proposed, the donation of the five hundred thousand for the design as, as agreed to, stop sign, stop line at the driveway. Dark sky, compliant lighting.
Okay, uh, site plan approval.
I'll vote for site plan approval.
Second?
I will second Mimi's motion.
Hayden seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
You any of us?
Thank you very much.
See you here October eleventh. So, see you here October eleventh.
Yes.
You are next. Okay, the next order of business is case number twenty dash twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. At eight Wesley Street. And the petitioner is John Scolaro, represented by...
Good evening, Anthony Ross, your rapport petitioner. Mr. Scolaro, who's the proprietor and owner of the establishment, is present with us today. He does have his project manager, his foreman, is on site in the back. Basically, this application, this petition is, Mr. Scolaro's been operating his masonry company there that originally was started from his father forty-seven years ago, here in Chelsea. And what he's looking to do is, on the existing footprint, take a portion of the building on top of the same footprint and take about eighteen hundred square feet to add a second story addition on it. So it'd be two stories, not to exceed two stories. And basically, what he's trying to do is, he currently has offices on the first floor. It's four offices, and a conference room and another assisting room, that printing room that he uses on the first floor. Coupled with, they store some brick masonry products and so forth on site. And it's got a garage front in there. What he's trying to do is move those offices to the second floor, so they have a better spot to, you know, nicer offices and so forth, and be more manageable. And I believe he'll show you pictures. So in the mornings, this is, this is how it is on the inside. So imagine now you have offices in the back here with, they come in the morning, they come and pick up their trucks, they fill up the trucks with the masonry material goods and so forth, and they leave. And when I say masonry, I mean, as far as material, not brick, but the equipment itself. They leave on site, and then they leave in there. So on that sec, that portion of the building, they're not changing the footprint. They're only taking a portion of the first floor and going up on the second floor to move the offices that are now in the rear of the building to go into the second floor. And then by doing so, they also now have a capability, if they ever need to, to actually have vehicles go inside the building and park there. And probably have at least four vehicles that could go right in there when they take away these offices. But the real goal here wasn't to, so they could have off-street vehicles to park. They actually have a, an agreement now with one of the abutters, and they actually park in his lot. It's more that they want to have offices on the second floor, so it's better office space than being on the ground level with all this other equipment and vehicles going in and out in the mornings. So essentially, what he's trying to do is just build a second story on top of it. I know we had many conversations with the abutters and neighbors, and, and they were now in support, from speaking to them, not against what he's doing here. And as far as the abutting structures, nothing, nothing in the nature of the abutting properties are higher than what he's currently being proposing for the board. It's more just, you know, building a better quality space for his staff. And it's about, I want to say it's close between sixteen to eighteen hundred square feet on top that he's building. That's essentially the application for the board.
So it wouldn't be, um, the second story, it wouldn't cover the entire? So it would only be, it looks like a little more than a half?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. He just did enough to basically do what he's doing now.
And it's on the same footprint?
On the same footprint.
There's no residential?
No.
Well, there's residential neighborhood all around, but...
Yeah, I thought you meant the building.
It says, um...
So the, all of the abutters...
It mentions residential in the petition.
Oh, no, there's no residential use being proposed, no. It's strictly to move the offices from the first floor to the...
I think it's a mistake.
Correct.
And have all of the abutters been made aware of what you're proposing?
Yes, in fact, the notice was brought by the city. And to, they sent it to three hundred feet of all the abutters. And Mr. Scolaro's actually had a good relationship with the abutters. In fact, he parked his vehicles in one of the abutters' lots, the, his commercial lot, and on it. And they don't have an objection, because the height itself anyways, it's almost at the corner, is, is very minimal, the minimum, compared to the, you know, the homes in the back area. It's actually less, far less than their height. So that's why he didn't even want to go to the full back footprint, because he didn't need it, he only needed enough for his offices.
What is the height?
I think the height, it should be an elevation, but it shouldn't exceed...
There is, there is an elevation, just let me find it.
Twenty-five feet in height. So...
It's no taller than it needs to be to...
Correct.
Perform that function.
Correct. And he, and he's going to continue the masonry on this, you know, the second floor of the facade to match the brick that's currently there.
I'm sorry, I lost this paperwork on this. Did you guys propose a signage plan? A lighting plan? Do you have that?
I don't think they, I don't think he went too far yet, the architect.
Correct, we haven't done anything of signage or not. It's not like...
I assume that since now, it's really easy to put some kind of signage and lighting on the building.
Yeah, we can certainly put lighting through design review as they recommend.
Because I noticed there's no lighting on the outside, that's all I was just wondering.
Absolutely. And if the wall was inclined, that could be part of design review and so forth.
Okay.
Questions? Motion?
I motion to pass with the conditions of...
With the standard, standard conditions, design review, at least two inside parking spaces, signage plan, and lighting plan.
Correct.
Yes.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Board. Guys, have a good night.
If you, if you want to go. I'm sorry, I should have told you sooner. There's still one item that you have left.
Yeah, we still have one more item. Okay.
The last order of business is zoning, I mean, public hearing.
There's nobody here.
And there's no public hearing here. So I'll get up and say... You want to run us through that, John?
Sure. So there was a proposal by a, by the new, so this is the site where the, um...
Eastern Ave.
No, it's on Webster Ave.
Oh, Webster Ave.
No, there was, where they shoot paintballs, the paintball. Uh, that company is gone, so the place is empty. The owner received some inquiries from Tesla, who would like to put in electric vehicle or repair facility in that site. And it's not permitted in that shopping center district. This would be to allow it. I'm telling you, I'm, I am opposed to a electric collision, vehicle collision repair in the shopping center district. But it would not limit it just to shopping center district. It would also allow it in the, by special permit in the highway businesses and the industrial district. I did, the owner of the site did come in my office this morning and told me that Tesla is no longer interested in the site, they found another site. But he did ask for it to go forward, just in case.
Didn't we, was it during the lockdown? I, I seem to remember we had a hearing about another, like, electric vehicle repair.
Yes, in the industrial district on, uh, not Gary Shav, on Griffin Way.
That's because they're getting ready for the Amazon, because Amazon, they want to be able to repair, Amazon trucks are all...
Would be in a different location.
But, no, but, but that zoning didn't, did not allow for collision repair. That was just prepping the vehicles and doing, you know, inspections and getting them ready to pass over to the owner.
Okay.
This would allow the actual collision repair.
My only hesitation would be that it could potentially bring more traffic to the city for that reason. I was getting my car inspected a couple of months ago, and they said that they would be completely jammed up with electric vehicle, you know, repairs and inspections if they allowed it. So there's a real demand for it, because the airport's right there and there's fleets of Teslas. So I don't object to the use, but we don't want to have more traffic for people coming to, you know, charge their vehicle before they drop it off at the airport or whatever.
My objection is not to the use. My objection is to the use in the shopping center district. Shopping center district is not really meant for this type of activity. It really should be in the highway business and maybe in the industrial district.
I agree with that. Yeah, I, um, can, uh, kind of...
Just, just so you know, the...
Kind of like Tesla.
Open. All right, so this...
That's what they have up in the North Shore. That's exactly what they have. That's Tesla's prototype. They go where, that's why they're in shopping malls, that's why they're, that's why they're not in... I, I have a different view. I kind of like the idea of them being there. I agree that traffic on Webster Ave is, I lived there, it is a nightmare, but it's, you know, I, I see John's point, but I sort of think it's, would, um, well, if Tesla's not going to be there, there's no point in my opinion.
They're not interested anymore?
No. Uh, these are the two shopping center districts. This is where the Home Depot is, this is Market Basket. The blue is the industrial district, and the, and the reddish pink is the highway business, where it would be permitted otherwise. But now, if you go back to the purpose of the districts, so highway, purpose of a highway business, providing areas for retail business, serving vehicles, automotive sales. So obviously, it, it's the type of use that you want in those districts. Shopping center is for retail, sales, and services. It's not for, really for collision repair. And then the industrial district, it's for manufacturing.
My issue is that shopping centers are having a very difficult time retaining clients. There's a reason why shopping centers are dying all over there. And one of the ways to, either is, some of them are becoming restaurant ghettos, which are very interesting ideas, they become big restaurant purposes. Or, I thought, like I said, I think Tesla is sort of an atypical realtor, but he has a, they, it's a very cleverly-run business. Who knows, they could light your little rocket up there, who knows? But I understand what you're saying, but it, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll go for it.
Can you hold the proposed amendment again? Okay.
So that actually requires three. You have to insert a definition of what electric vehicle collision repair is. Then you actually have to add in, um, in the, in the site plan, where it's being proposed that this be allowed by major site plan review. And then, so you have to include that in the list of uses that require major site plan. And then you have to amend the table of uses to allow by SP, a special permit.
So this is coming from the city council?
It is. It is.
Do we have...
I, I wrote it at the request.
Sorry, do we have the option to send it back to them, to tell them to remove the shopping center district?
You do. Your recommendation can be anything of to accept it as is, or not accept it at all, or make changes to it.
Okay. And we're not talking charging stations as part of the same approval? Would that be a separate...
I'm sorry.
Electric vehicle charging stations? If we allow the repair, are we also saying that we are permitting charging stations?
You're not.
You're two mutually exclusive things, okay? So...
I mean, not as if, they could propose the use. And then, like the Griffin Way site, they have electric vehicle charging stations on there as well, as an amenity for people who are picking up their vehicles. You, I, I don't think there would be anything preventing the Tesla or whatever, them doing that here.
Okay. I, I mean, I have no objection to that. And there certainly should be some charging stations in every shopping plaza.
So I think Tesla was originally interested, and their business model is very unique. But I guess you can think of this as a sense of, like, of just a regular car dealership with a showroom and repairs.
That's, that's not what's being, uh, being approved there. There would just be vehicle collision repairs.
So no retail, no showrooms?
No retail, no.
Well, that's in the mall. You want your Tesla in the mall and taken to repair outside them? Like Sears, remember when Sears had the...
Yeah.
That's what Tesla's doing. Sears, buy it at Sears, then you go across the, go across the parking lot, you get it repaired. And what John's saying is, he doesn't want that there.
So this is basically to be a large auto body shop?
Yeah.
For like your vehicles?
For EVs.
Well, I mean, there's concerns about pedestrian traffic, too. So if there's a lot of vehicles coming and going, especially non-functioning vehicles, then it's a consideration. Perhaps there's separate access? I don't know, maybe there's some clause you put in there about...
Like, kind of, I mean, that shopping center is...
We're not talking about anything specifically right now. I mean, this is an eventuality.
It's an awful small building for an automotive collision thing.
Uh, I've been told there's thirty-two thousand square feet available.
How much is it?
Thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, that's pretty much, still kind of...
So there's two shopping centers, the Market Basket one and the home to go on.
Yes.
And this will...
Allow it in both.
Yeah. So I probably say no, because it's the Market Basket one.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we send it back and tell, or to amend it to not allow it in the shopping center district.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Where's my chair? What do you think, Tuck?
Sorry, I want to make, what is the exact area that you're...
This is the site where the paintball factory, paintball recreations used to be over in Webster Ave.
Right behind the top of this.
Yeah, right, right behind the, I don't know... Yeah, right, right behind the, I don't know the name of the, of the pot distributor.
It's in the Home Depot parking lot. Home Depot, McDonald's, Brown Jug.
So it'd be on the right side?
Planet Fitness.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. And, and the 300 unit or 250 unit apartment building right across the street from it.
But apparently Tesla had expressed interest in the property to use for collision repair. They're no longer interested, but we, you know, the city council has put forward this amendment, or, yeah, amendments to allow for electric vehicle collision repair in certain districts.
I mean, to be honest, I'm fine with it in that location, but the fact that we're opening up to the Market Basket location, because that's a shopping center district, is not, wouldn't be ideal for that location.
So it would be right here.
That's the Home Depot area.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And where would traffic be coming and going?
Webster's.
Stockton.
Webster's, like off of Webster, or where they...
Webster and, Webster, Stockton.
Stockton, Verbeach Parkway.
I mean, I go up Webster every day.
Is it?
I'm guessing a lot of them are coming from the airport.
Paintball?
Paintball.
And don't forget the escape room, excuse me.
And the archery.
Yeah, it's a great little...
Are there any other shopping, oh, there, those are the only two.
Those are the only two, Market Basket area and this area.
I think it's counter to the nature of that, of that establishment. By establishment, I mean the whole works. It, it's across the street from the condominiums there. It's a repair shop. That's my opinion.
You have seen what a Tesla repair shop looks like, correct?
Could eat off the floors, right?
I only go for roll-throughs.
So, I'm just saying, it's an electric vehicle, so...
I'll go for it, maybe.
I'm just saying, it's not, it's not...
What is that? Go ahead, sorry.
And I'm only concerned about...
It is, they're, they're not, I mean, there's, it's not like...
I know.
Everything's like, it's very clean, I, I see what John's saying, I, I get it, but I'll vote.
Could we put some conditions in there, like perhaps it has its own...
No, I think we should tell them back to say, hey.
I think we should kick it out.
Just say no.
Okay, I was gonna say, if it had its own...
It's been read Nancy Reagan, just say no.
Access road that wasn't crossing paths with all the pedestrians, then I'd have no problem with it. That would mean if an application would come before us, yeah. Okay, so we wouldn't write that into the bylaws?
This is just, we want to keep the shopping centers what they are, shopping centers.
Yeah.
So do we have to vote by each amendment, or just on Amendment Three that we're going to change the language?
Technically, it's all one amendment to the ordinance because you have to do it in three pieces in order to accommodate them.
Okay, so, Charlene started the motion, so if you want to do the motion.
I, you know, Amendment One and Amendment Two, as written, as we're seeing them on the screen right now, are fine. My issue is with this third clause, I would say, I would not want to allow it in the shopping center district. I think that needs to be removed from this, from this amendment.
I agree.
So, is that a motion to recommend that the amendment be revised to exclude these shopping center district in Amendment Three?
Yes, please. I make the motion, what John just said.
And I'll second that.
We're at my bedtime.
My brain's not working.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Of the motion? Any opposed?
Yeah, of course. Guys gotta go to shopping centers more. That's democracy and it's work, we lose.
Adjournment?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
The meeting is adjourned.
Aye, thank you. John, do we, do we have a package for next month?
Yes, yes, don't leave, I have...